Before we begin the meeting this morning, commissioners, I would like to invite Dr. Jeff Etling to the podium and bring along a couple of special guests from the zoo. So if you'll bear with us for just a few moments, we'll come in here and get the room organized for some surprises. Do you want to come to the podium?
Yeah, sure.
Morning, Jeff. How are you?
Well, good morning, everybody. We thought that, you know, all the stress that we've all been under due to the COVID pandemic, that we would bring a few, or a couple, I should say, a couple of your friends from the zoo just to say hello this morning. And in fact, what we've brought is two of our Humboldt Penguins with us. We're actually getting ready to initiate a new personalized meet and greet program with the Penguins, and you guys are the first to see this. So I don't know if you guys want to go ahead and let out our guests?
We have Penguins this morning. Here they go.
If you would like to come and interact with them, you can come around.
You can come around?
Yeah, just come visit with us so we make sure that the doors stay closed.
Come what way?
Come around.
So these are Humboldt Penguins from Peru and Chile, and I know the first question that everybody asks is, isn't it too warm for them? But these guys, you know, majority of penguins actually come from temperate environments. In fact, where this species originates is it's kind of some of the hottest deserts in the world meet up with some of the coldest ocean currents. So they're well adept at the kind of climate that we have here in Wichita, Kansas. You'll also notice that in addition to their black and white coloration, that they've got some pink around their face and even along their feet, and that allows them to regulate heat when they get really hot. They blush and allows them to regulate their temperature. And they're just checking everything out.
What are their names?
Their names are Farley and Buddha.
Oh.
Do they know Javelin? They do not.
How old are they?
Dead.
How old are they?
Um, not really, no. Buddha, the, so they all have different color combinations. So this guy, Buddha, is red and black, so he's left wing to right wing, even though it's kind of faded. And then this guy is green-white. But the green-white is like five, I want to say, and then Buddha is, um, Marching from two years ago.
So what are the bands on the drums?
Do what? Uh, they do stuff.
That's just so we can tell the whole party.
They do socialize, but they're not touchy-feely. They like their personal space. They're good at social distancing.
Me, too.
And they like shoes. They like, just watch their shows, they like their nail polish and their hair.
Oh, gosh.
We just wanted to stop by briefly and say hello and wish you a good day and a good meeting and introduce you to our two Penguins that, like I said, this is the inaugural outing for them, but we're going to be doing more of this in the, in the community moving forward, but we wanted to give you the first opportunity.
Very good.
So thank you for allowing us to stop by at the beginning of your meeting.
It's a pleasant surprise. Thank you.
Jeff, and thank you to the zoo for bringing those fun guests for us this morning.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Okay. And now that we're all situated again, we would also like to recognize our outgoing Public Works Director, David Spears, for his dedicated service. So we'll bring him into the room as well to recognize him. And Chairman, if you'd like to come to the podium or stay up there, happy to accommodate, however.
Okay. I'll stay here and then I'll come down there and you all can say something.
What a delightful meeting this is today.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. So David is on his way.
Good morning. I found this when I was cleaning out my office yesterday. Good morning.
Good morning.
David, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
We did not, we did not want you to go through your last meeting without us sharing our appreciation for your service. You want to talk first or do you want us to talk first?
Well.
I'll let you, you talk first if you want.
I have a few comments to make today.
Okay.
A few years ago, when we did strategic planning, I've been through several of them. One of the exercises we had was tell your prouds and tell your sorries. Today, I just want to talk about the prouds. I am proud to be an employee of Sedgwick County. That's the main thing. Second thing, I want to talk about our road program. When I came here, even our hot mixed roads were in disarray, in shambles, potholes, had lawsuits. People were driving down the middle of the road so they could avoid the potholes. It's very dangerous. But one of the best things that ever happened was the citizens passed the sales tax for the half-cent sales tax dedicated to roads and bridges. And that sent us off and running, and we methodically reconstructed every one of those hot mixed roads. So I'm very proud of that and what they are today. And then we not only reconstructed them, we have a preventive maintenance program where we take care of them, and they're just as good today as they were, and we started building them in 1982. So very proud of that. Proud of the CIP. I'll tell you a little story. I'm not telling you this to brag about it or anything, just a matter of historical significance. When I came to the county in 1982, so I go back and start looking and seeing what the guys are working on, what everybody's working on. And so I'd go up and I'd say, well, what are you working on? The person would say, well, I don't know. The commissioners haven't told us yet. And I did this with several people, and nobody was doing anything because they were waiting for commissioners to tell them what to do. So I'm thinking, we need to have a plan, and we present the plan to the commissioners, and then we build the plan. So I guess I actually invented the CIP in 1982. And the first CIP was just roads and bridges. It had no facilities in it. And myself and another guy from up here, Ken Arnold, with their manager's office, we handwrote the whole thing. And then it got typed up with what you don't see anymore, a typewriter. So what I'm proud about is how it has been embraced by commissioners, by the staff. Tanya and Lindsay have run with it. It's all computerized now, and I'm just so proud about the CIP. Another thing I'm proud about, in 1990, the highway program by the state, state's done one about every 10 years. You always hear about other counties, Johnson County, Kansas City, getting more money than Sedgwick County. They didn't beat us that year. That time, we got more than anybody in the state. And we were able to be the administrators for K-96 from Wichita to Hutchinson, and we widened that from two lanes to four lanes. And then also K-254, not just one road, but the other going to El Dorado, we widened it from two lanes to four lanes. These were mega-million-dollar projects. So I'm pretty proud about how Sedgwick County stepped up. We put some money into it and were able to get those major projects. Another thing I'm proud of is the tornado cleanup. We've had three tornadoes since. We had the Andover tornado, we had the Hayesville tornado, and then we had the Oaklawn tornado. And our folks stepped up and helped clean up, and that's a very traumatic time for people if you're out with them and you go up. I walked up to a couple, they were sitting in lawn chairs, and there was no house there, and I just wondered if you could tell, people are in shock. So I guess what I'm getting at, down at Public Works, and I know the rest of the county, too, what we're here for is to help people. We're obviously not here for the money because it doesn't pay great, but we're here to help people, and that's, that's what we do. Also proud about the Public Works building constructed in 1998. It allowed us to move, we were, you don't know, we were in a modified lumberyard laundromat, and it wasn't very good condition, so appreciate the commissioners back then. We were able to get the money and build us an engineering building. So that's great. It was great for morale and very proud of that. Now, another kind of funny thing I want to tell you, in 1992, Jim Weber and I both won the chairman's award. And so after it was awarded, we told the commissioner, I said, you're, you're not supposed to give that to somebody that's in the county. It's supposed to go to somebody outside. He did not know that. So it was kind of funny, but I just want to tell everybody, we're not going to give them back. And that was for a water system that we got some federal funds for, and we had water lines put in for a whole community that was able to get water then that didn't have it before. They're the ones that made this happen. They're dedicated people. They're great technicians, great craftsmen, do unbelievable things. So above all, that's what I'm proud of, so. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, David. You know what? You didn't mention 38 years, but for the public to know that, thank you for your 38 years as a notable leader. You mentioned a couple of things. Reminder that K-96 to Hutchinson you're involved in, K-96, the Northwest East Bypass that we just talked about recently, it was great to hear your history, it lined up with my history on that. That was really a good discussion. Kellogg Interchanges at Tyler Mays, I-235, the Arc 95, the new bridge in Hayesville, significant, their campus high school, and the Northwest Bypass right away. Also, you've been a great partner with paved parking lot at the zoo, infrastructure at our parks. Your team has been a key in the county's response to natural disasters, as you mentioned. Those are emotionally tough times and great for us to show up and help the floods. Your wealth of knowledge will be missed, but we have, making preventive maintenance in high priorities and keeping our 600 miles of roads and bridges in top shape, you've established a good footprint for us all to follow. And we want to wish you the best in retirement, and I want to present you with a, with a token of our appreciation, and while I come down there, I'll allow all the other commissioners to speak to you, okay? Vice.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. You know, I think what's most impressive about you is your attitude and your smile. You're always so happy, and I really, really appreciate that. You know how to lighten any mood in the past year and a half. That's probably the biggest thing that I'm going to remember about you. I'm sad I didn't have more time to work with you, but I hope that you'll be doing something fun in your retirement. Do you have some, some things planned?
My wife and I raised our grandson from a baby, and he is graduating from high school this year.
Oh, yay.
So he's going to college, KU, of course. And we're going to move up there with him, and it's just the next phase of our lives.
Nice. Well, I appreciate the time that we've had together, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure. Commissioner O'Donnell, you guys just want to go in line?
Sure, we can do it. Well, David, personally, I'm sad to lose you. I consider you a friend. I want you to come back to Sedgwick County, see us. You've been an extremely consequential leader to Sedgwick County and in fact, in the whole state of Kansas. There's no Public Works Director that has served as long in their capacity as you have, and I think with so much accomplishment, frankly. You mentioned in your speech about rebuilding Hayesville after that tornado 20 years ago. It's still, your handiwork's over there. Sedgwick County's in, I tell people, oh, sorry, my mic off. Talk loud, sorry about that. But I tell people, when they ask me about what I think about Sedgwick County, I said, Sedgwick County is in good shape. We're in good financial shape because of good, sound fiscal management, but we're also in very good fiscal shape, and that's because of the job that you and your staff have done and set out and accomplished. And it's been over the last four decades that you've been here, you had a goal to keep our roads to be the best in the state, even though we have the most bridges, most roads. I'm very proud of the physical shape we're in. You mentioned the building on South Seneca. I remember as a kid seeing that area transform. It was a blighted area, nasty. It was an eyesore for South Seneca. And you turned it in. That's probably the finest building that Sedgwick County has, most solidly built and as great a shape as any building that Sedgwick County's in. So I think that's your legacy because that building's going to be around for another 50, 200 years because of the efforts that you and your team put in it. So your handiwork and fingerprints in Sedgwick County are going to be felt for multiple generations. I know you'll be back because your mother's still staying here, right? So you're going to have to come back, and you have other family here, but, but I'm personally going to miss you. I've appreciated our friendship. I appreciate the fact that whenever there was an issue in my district, I knew I could tell you about it, and it would get accomplished. And that says a lot in government because we follow through with our actions here in Sedgwick County because of, because of people like you. And like I said, 38 years, you are a consequential leader for Sedgwick County and myself, and I know your industry's really going to miss you. So thank you for leaving this in great shape, and you've really made Jim Weber's job a lot easier because of the condition you've left Sedgwick County Public Works, so we'll miss you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, David, it's sad to see you go. The theme of your speech that you just gave was pride, and you have a lot to be proud of. But we're honored that you were able to serve our community for 38 years, and we sincerely appreciate that. And you could not have done that without the support of your family and all of the staff that has been serving under you during that period of time. We appreciate it very much. I've had the great opportunity to work with you for the past three and a half years on, on projects like the North Junction, which I went through twice last night, and that's going to be a part of your legacy, is how that we got that moving on that first phase and what's going to happen because of that. But your legacy is going to live on beyond that because you've done a tremendous amount of work on other major projects that are still in the future, like the Northwest Bypass that, that we just passed a funding agreement with KDOT last week. Arc 95, that's down in the southern, southern part of the county. Every part of this county can be proud as they're driving down those roads, that the legacy that you're leaving behind is, is going to be something that moves our county into the future. We sincerely appreciate that. The work that you've done with WAMPO on, on getting the major projects accomplished here in Sedgwick County, the works that you've done with our Chamber of Commerce that, that is working on transportation issues is going to be moving us into the future. You and I have gone to Topeka together to talk to the KDOT and the Secretary of Transportation. We've met here locally with the Secretary of Transportation, and truly, I can't say it enough, you're going to leave a legacy. I understand, as you started to speak, that it is emotional. Anytime that you devote a huge part of your life to a major project, that is difficult to step away from. All of us that have retired from other major jobs understand what you're going through right now. But you can, you've talked about pride, you can be very proud of what you did, and again, we're very honored to have worked with you. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Mr. Spears, I have one question for you. How many commissioners have you worked for in the 38 years?
26.
Well, I, you said you have things of pride and things of some sorries. I have a couple of sorries. Sorry that you had to work with so many difficult people over the years. I think we have five strong personalities today, and I'm sure that's always been true. And I think when you have that complexity, you're one of the few people in the county that actually reports to the commission kind of directly, and so that is very, very challenging. And I know that you've done a tremendous job, and so I'm, I'm sorry that you've had to put up with all that frustration problem, I'm sure, over the years, but you've hidden it very well. You've always been kind and friendly, you've always been respectful and professional, you've always been approachable. In fact, I have you on speed dial. Not very many people in the county have on speed dial, but you're one of the very few because I know I can always get you, and you're always receptive to whatever challenges going on, and you always give the highest level of priority, and it gets fixed, whatever that problem is as quickly as possible. And you've been extremely good at doing that. So I want to say thank you for, for being such a great person, leading up such a major part of our entire county, county footprint, frankly. Look at their entire budget. One of our biggest parts of our budget is public, public works and infrastructure, and you've done a tremendous job, and you're going to be sorely missed, and so that's my other sorries. I'm sorry to see you go, but I know you have better things to do than this, and so I'm happy for you, but I'm sad, I'm sad for us. You're going to be, you're going to be missed. Your footprint, I'm sorry, your legacy's all over the county. Your name is, is in brass plaques everywhere, and you'll be remembered forever and talked about forever as one of the best. And so I, I will, I'm going to seriously miss you, and I wish you the very best. And with that, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all you've done for Sedgwick County.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. I appreciate those comments.
And just one more thing. Nobody mentioned the infamous road shows that, that you did. I think we're all, we're all going to miss that and the fact that you brought us candy every year for those road shows. Did you do one every year since you were engineer?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So that's a lot, that's a lot of road shows, so thank you for that. And I'll always have the phrase that infrastructure is the mother's milk of economic development.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have this nice water fruit crystal for you. Thank you for 38 years of service as county engineer to Sedgwick County, August of 82 to June of 2020. And there is a quote from David Spears in here, and we can all chime in together if you know it, if you know the words. Lacy, you have your guitar? We could play.
Let me go get it.
Infrastructure is the mother's milk of economic development. Right. Thank you, David.
So you've all done a really good job, between David and the five of you, of covering really the first page of everything I had, so we'll get rid of that. Although I will add, on the disaster side, nobody mentioned Y-2K and how David bunkered down in the basement of this building on New Year's Eve before 2000 with emergency operations staff and a bunch of other county key staff to wait and see what would happen with Y-2K. I think it was very short-lived after midnight, nothing bad happened, but I'm sure he remembers. I think that hors d'oeuvres down there, actually, may have been more like a party, but I just want to say that on behalf of our staff, and I have to provide a special shout-out from his executive secretary, Mata Roman, who's very sad to see him go, and we want to thank him for his leadership, his clear direction, his professionalism. He's always encouraged the discussion of alternative viewpoints, and he's made our employees at every level feel that they could and should express their ideas. He's done more in his, more than his fair share for 38 years, and we wish him well in his retirement. So we'd like to present him with a small momentum of his time here. And so every new bridge gets a bronze plaque, and it provides key information like the date of construction, a structure number, it lists out the names of the county commissioners at the time, the engineer that designed it, the contractor, and the county engineer's name. As it turned out, we did have a major rehabilitation project on a hydraulic bridge just north of Park City over Chisholm Creek last year. That happened to be one of the first bridges that he had the ability to sort of, we're going to do these bridges. It's in the first group that we built under his tenure. While we were up there doing demolition on the bridge, some pretty smart people decided to grab this. Don't put it anywhere near your clock. So David made the mistake of standing around long enough, he had to replace this bridge twice. This is an original plaque from 87.
Wow.
I don't know where you're going to put it, but it won't hang on the wall very well. We do have an easel for it. But we just really want to thank him for what he's done. He deserves a good, happy retirement, and congratulations on a job well done. I will carry this back to your car before it's over. I have a two-wheeler in the office back there, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Dan. That's awesome.
That's fantastic.
Wow. There was that wave.
Thank you. Thank you.
You are welcome. Dan will grab that, and he said, shall we keep this in case he retires someday? Yeah, let's do it.
That's great.
That's good.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, David, thanks again for your leadership, for your work, dedication, and, and most of all, I think you heard from everybody, from the friendships to us individually and the friendships that you've built with your staff and the whole community. So you, you can sleep at night knowing that you've got a lot of friends and you've done a, you know, job well done, job well done.
Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll wash my hands afterwards. So kicking the meeting off, I would like to have one more reminder. This Saturday, we will be in, let me see if I can find the graphic here, I'm sorry. This Saturday, we will be in Clearwater for a household hazardous waste remote collection event from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Chisholm Trail Sports Complex. So make sure you mark that on your calendar and drop off your household hazardous waste, and we are again keeping everything safe for residents who are participating in this. We will remove the materials from your vehicles so there will not be contact between residents and staff. On the agenda this morning, we have meeting minutes, a proclamation, you have two items from the solid waste plan, a CARES discussion, and we also have a fire agenda. So Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you if you'd like to make some comments about Mayor.
Will do. Thank you, Kate, and thanks for helping coordinate all this this morning. Before we call, the order to business, just want to extend, as we all know, we lost this week, our community lost a great leader in, in Mayor Carl Brewer in his passing. He was a friend, a colleague, and a mentor. Carl was a great leader, as we all know, and more important, he was a good man. His passion for Wichita was unwavering. As Mayor of Wichita, he bolstered our community's international trade opportunities, supported New Eisenhower Airport, the Advanced Learning Library, and helped Wichita through our Great Recession after '08. He was a good partner with Sedgwick County as well. He loved to give back to his community and did so every chance he got, as evidenced by involvement on numerous boards and committees. Personally, when I met Carl officially in 2011, first elected to the city council, he was the mayor, his first mayor election, and I found him to be a, just a solid, calm, he had a large presence, as we all know, but he had a very deep voice and a calming voice. And regardless of the emotions that would happen from citizens in meetings and citizens in, in public meetings and private meetings, he was always a calm and steady voice. So my personal sympathies are with Kathy and the Brewer family during these times. I hope that, although their hearts are heavy, I hope they're at peace. I would like to invite if any other commissioners would like to mention something, they're more than welcome, so. Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, when I ran for office, I was really shocked to receive a call from Mayor Brewer. I didn't really know him, but he reached out to me and offered his support and encouragement. And that was something I'll never forget, because he was one of the first ones to do that. And he was one of the only ones to do that. And he believed in someone he didn't even know. And he got, we got to know each other. He told me to always be myself. And it didn't matter what happened, just to stay true to who I am. And I will forever be thankful for his encouragement, his kind words, his smile that was very big and, and made, made a room brighten up. So I will miss him. My, my heart too goes out to Kathy and the entire Brewer family.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. And again, his service is Friday at 11 o'clock. I'm, I'm planning to attend. And I'll represent our commission and myself personally. If, if you can make it, fine. And otherwise, I will be there. And he also has a memorial service on Saturday. So with that, we will call the meeting to order of Wednesday, June 17th, of the Cedric County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invocation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you received one written, written public comment. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Then I'll take a motion to receive and file on this, on the written public comments.
So moved.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded for the written public comments, and then we'll have public comments signed up later. Madam Clerk, call it a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Commissioners, we had four citizens that have signed up to address us. So with that, we'll proceed with the public comment. First up, I show is Linda Leatherman. Please state your name and your address. I understand, according to the, to the, to the rules, you have five minutes to speak.
Linda Leatherman, 111th Street South, Mulvane, Kansas. Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to share with you my views on Cedric County, where I have lived my entire life, and in particular Rockford Township, where I have lived at the same location for 40 years, where the roads are worse now than 40 years ago. Yes, you heard me right. I appreciate what you and your predecessors have done to make it a great county to live in. My many thanks to Jim Howell, who has done everything he can legally do to help solve matters in our township, which is in desperate need of leadership and expertise. My desire is to remind you, that each of you and your interval districts have townships within their unique problems, and that you need to work together for the good of everyone living and working in the county. Even though your districts may not have the same problems as the others, please be sensitive and supportive of everyone's problems. Jim Howell did not ask me or tell me to speak today. I found out from a friend. Had I known of the opportunity, I would have spoken several years ago. I have watched some of your planning meetings and regular meetings lately on YouTube, quite interesting and a little disappointing. Please be kind to each other. You are setting an example, and some of what I have seen is not very kind or necessary. I have come to ask for your immediate support for the proposal Jim has made for townships to work with Cedric County to resolve desperate situations regarding the safety of the residents. The whole issue resolves around the safety of all. Our township leadership has offered help, was offered help from the county three years ago. Jim worked very hard on that proposal, and the trustee never took him up on the help, which we desperately needed then and still do. It has not gotten better, only worse on most roads. Last week, our trustee shared with you about there being two sides to every story, which he had also shared with me. Well, believe me, there is only one side to the story, and you did not get all the facts straight from him. Promises have been made and never even attempted to be kept with regards to making roads passable. I had a meeting at my house last week with 17 of my closest neighbors, including Jim. We agreed that there needs to be something in place so we can get immediate action when certain roads in our township get so bad that the safety of everyone is involved. We could have gone on all night about our trustee and the horror stories of unsafe roads, verbal abuse, and mismanagement of money, but we focused on what can be done now. Don Thorn, Don Thornbrew attended and shared what he has planned, if elected, as our next trustee. I urge you to appoint him in place of our current trustee when he resigns in July. Don has worked on a township board position previously in Texas. He has also tried in the past to work with our township, like many of us, without any results. Most gave up on attending township meetings or attempting phone calls when they were treated with such horrible verbal assaults. Many times, the trustee would not even be at the meetings. We cannot wait for the election in November and installation of a new trustee in January. We will need one as soon as present trustee steps down. I believe Don can make a big difference in a short time. He is willing to take on the task, and it is not going to be an easy one to correct all the wrong that has been done. My husband and I have been very involved in the township upkeep for many years. I have cleaned away heavy items out of ditches. We helped get the equipment back into possession of the township when a former trustee had it locked on his property. We have cleaned out ditches, mowed, cleaned trash, and not just on our road, we have helped in many aspects. So this is not just a one-time thing of coming to this meeting and expressing our views. We have been working for years. We love our country home and want to be able to enjoy it for many more years. Quite a few times, I have had to cancel parties or events at my house because guests cannot get down my road. Many people will call and ask if it's safe to travel down the short three-quarters mile to get to our house. I also was able to visit with the firemen out in the other room. One of our other members of the township suggested that we have the, and this will be something you, Commissioners, can do. And the gentleman in the other room, they said they'd be happy to come out as firemen and check our roads to see if emergency vehicles can get down. And I think they will be quite shocked at what they find. I do, I do appreciate everything that the Commissioners have done over the years. I do love my Cedric County. I love my little town of Mulvane. I just, my daughter, when we got ready to have the meeting last week, she said, I said, "Anything you want to say?" Of course, she wasn't even born when we moved out there 40 years ago. She says, "Mom, just, just tell them to get the roads better, because I want to buy a new car." She's, but anyway, so she, you know, I, seriously, the other night, I had my husband, before the meeting, go down to one of our horrible ditches where there's a culvert across. I had him edge and put up flags so no one would fall in it. Two nights ago, I had him do the other side and edge that, because right now, we're having to pull over to let the other person down, which I do gladly. I don't have a problem. I'm not in that big of a hurry. And so at least those two areas, I know, are the worst parts of my road. And then I get to Greenwich. It was nice. We moved out there. We didn't even have Greenwich paint. So I can't think of me, I had, I was trying to go for three minutes. I timed myself. My speech teacher would probably not be very proud of me. But anyway, if you have any questions, I, I would be happy. I just, I just think that it's a good idea, two things, to get Don into the position as soon as possible, so he can get to be working on the problems that have been ignored. And then to also have the thing passed, you all know what I'm talking about, as soon as you can. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherman. No questions. Wait, Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say, I don't actually have a question. I just want to say thank you for taking the time to come. I know this has been a challenging issue. And I know that in time, this will, this will get fixed in time. So just have faith, and I understand how hard this is and so on. I just want to say thank you for taking time to share your, share your ideas this morning. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, written down was Rex Knoll, but I understand he's not here. So next up is Mr. Leatherman. Good morning, Mr. Leatherman. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good morning. Jay Leatherman, and I live on 111th Street South. For your reference, it's about a mile north and about two miles east of Mulvane. I'd just like to share some of my concerns, the one, main one being the safety to my friends and family. I have lived in the township for over 55 years. I have lived at my current location for 40 years. I actually started driving on these roads when I was about 14, so I've got some experience. Regardless of the arguments and comments, the roads are more dangerous and impassable now in wet conditions than they've ever been. My emphasis is not on the smoothness of the roads, but just the safety. In the past few years, we've had more accidents. We've had several accidents in the last few years that we just didn't see before. Over the past several years, the ditches have not been properly maintained. They haven't been mowed, they haven't been cleaned, there's trees growing, and the culverts have not been installed. These conditions have created major problems that we now see. In the last few years, they've chosen to move the ditches closer to the center of the road. They've narrowed the roadway, and this, and they haven't provided a adequate drainage. And it's changed a lot of our two-lane roads back into one lane. The water no longer runs through the ditches and culverts, but right down the middle of the road. It destroys the roadbed and it takes the material off of the roadbed. During the normal rain, the water flows over the roadways, making them impassable and dangerous. In many cases, the water will run on the road and then off at a culvert, destroying the edges of the road. I have one picture you can see, and it's encroached from the, yeah, this one that's up on the other side. The white one is, you know, is supposed to be the edge of the road. This one is only about a foot in, the other one is over four feet inside on the roadway. So if you were going by the marked road, you would fall off. It's 56 inches deep, about seven to eight feet wide, and about 30 feet long. You can stick a pickup in there and it goes out of sight. So it's, it is dangerous, because it's not marked properly. And there is kind of a, an edge to the road. It'd be easy to get a wheel off, and it's dangerous. This problem has been placed before the township many times, this particular one too. And they haven't ignored it, they just haven't fixed it. They just keep rescheduling it. You know, I know this township, you know, is not your main concern, but it is part of the county, and a lot of people do drive in this area, a lot of the other residents. Therefore, I would like to ask you to consider the proposal to make the township accountable for, for these dangerous areas that they just haven't prioritized correctly. I believe the proposal would give the county the option of fixing or patching these dangerous areas and would get reimbursed from the township funds. The proposal gives the township more incentive to fix these dangerous areas. In closing, I would request that upon the recognition, or resignation, excuse me, of our current trustee, let a new one be appointed as quickly as possible, because the current conditions are dangerous and need to be fixed as soon as possible. August, we get rains, we get school buses starting to drive on these larger trucks. It's, it could really be bad. So I hope we can get some of these safety issues fixed. Thank you for your time. If you have any, any questions about these pictures that I've taken, I'd be glad to, glad to comment on them.
Thank you, Mr. Leatherman, for sharing your thoughts and your pictures. I don't see any, any comments, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Next up is Don Thornbrew. Good morning. And state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Well, I am Don Thornbrew. And thank you for your time. 10725 South Ellen in Mulvane. And I have filed for the township position. Our roads are terrible. I watched your meeting, where you said that most of your townships don't have road problems. Well, you're fortunate. We're not. 103rd where I live, a one-mile section of road, driven two car wrecks off the road, totaled the car, four flats, bent wheels, and a dump truck turned over. Multiply that by 41, and you get some issue or some idea of the scope of the issue. It's dangerous. I've had Channel 3 and Channel 12 news crews out there when it was muddy and made their news shows at 6 and at 10 both times. Jim's been very patient and very helpful. I think this policy, 6824 you're looking at, would be very helpful. If I'm successful in being installed as trustee, and I don't do my job, I would expect a resident for their own safety and security to use that process to help us get the roads fixed. If there's something that needs to be done, and we as a township don't get it done, I believe it's your responsibility to assist us or force us or whatever, however you want to look at it, to preserve the sanctity and the security and the safety of our residents. I know that there are times when I have talked to EMS officials, and they have told me, "If it rains hard, you're on your own. We can't get to you. The only way you'll get a, an ambulance is a helicopter." We live in a community. I find that objectionable. That's why I am campaigning for trustee. I have held position in Harris County. I believe we can make the roads better. It won't be an overnight transition. We got to work on drainings, we got to work on roads to make our community what it was when we moved out there. A nice place to raise kids and a safe place to live. Right now, it's not. And Commissioner Howell, I think, has a vision for what it can be and a nice share of that. And hopefully, we can work together to make that successful. Take a quick look here. I think that was... And that's all, really, I have to say. I mean, I know you think we're beating a dead horse on our roads, trying to, to get them fixed. You've heard probably more than you ever wanted to hear, and I understand that. But thanks for taking the time to hear us.
Thank you, Mr. Thornbrew. There's, Commissioner Howell has a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify. Appreciate you getting, again, I appreciate you coming today and sharing your perspective. And again, as I, as I told Ms. Leatherman, I believe that in time, this, all these issues will be fixed in time. I just wanted to ask you for clarification. Did you come today because I asked you to come?
No.
Because there is an accusation out there that I did that, and I want to make sure that we're clear.
Oh, no. No, not at all. I don't think anybody came because you've asked us. I mean, we're all aware that you're working on the issue, and it seemed from the televised meetings that I've seen, that there was some, I want to say, opposition to 6824. meetings that I've seen, that there was some, I want to say, opposition to six-eight-two-four, but maybe not the eagerness that we would expect to see. And we certainly, as a community, have a high standards for you, a set of high standards for you guys. I mean, you are where the buck stops. And some things are just beyond the realm of an expedient resolution. And if that occasion arises, and I happen to be the trustee, please help us. I mean, that's, that's really the way I see it and feel about it. I mean, I, I will, if I'm there, I'll do my best. But there may be a situation due to resources, or time, or whatever, that I can't foresee at this point in time, that we need an expedient, skillful resolution to a problem which endangers the security and safety of, of a neighborhood. Hundred and eleventh, or Hundred and Nineteenth and Hundred and Forty-Ninth is a prime example. You drive out there, be in a four-wheel drive. I tour the roads routinely, no less than once a month, sometimes more, and my truck stands seven foot six, it's got thirty-five-inch tires and four-wheel drive. And there's times when I have to put it in four-wheel drive to get through those roads. Try to imagine an ambulance or a fire truck getting somewhere at the end of a dead-end road, like where I live, to get to an emergency. As I was told more than once, it's a helicopter for, for an ambulance ride. If it's a house on fire, it's just going to burn down. I, I mean, as I said, we live in a community, and I think that's objectionable.
Mr. Thornburg, Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thanks, Chairman. I don't really have a question for you. I, I do have a question about the process, though. Last week, we talked about a timeline. Did I miss the timeline come through as to when we're going to resolve this? You know, I specifically asked for that last week, but I haven't seen anything. Did, did I miss that?
I'm going to let Mike address that, too, to some degree. Commissioners, we met with all of you individually and talked about perhaps an alternative to that, but the standing timeline that we discussed last week was to meet with you all, clean the policy, mail it to the townships, then meet with the townships, then roll the policy. I don't know where, I think Justin has been through all of you. I know the chairman just gave his edits within the last couple of days. I don't know where we're at with cleaning the policy, but we'll move after that. Otherwise, I think Mike could talk about the alternative, too, that we had, had talked about.
Commissioner Mike Papun, County Counselor, yes. We, Justin's been working on revisions to the policy, working with the chairman. We were going to meet two-two-and-one with each of the commi-, with the commissioners to discuss the policy changes. And at the same time, we talked with Commissioner Howell about essentially following some of the elements of the policy to inspect some of the roads and add some improvements to these roads that we could do even before a policy was adopted. And I'm going to add, the picture I saw there on the road isn't going to be addressed by this policy. This policy isn't dealing with drainage, it isn't dealing with right-of-way or the width of the roads. It's only dealing with whether a two-wheel car can passively go through the roads. I mean, that's what that statute deals with. It's not going in and reconstructing these roads to, unless we want to add that to a policy, but that, that isn't the way this policy's headed right now, anyway. But we will, we will keep the policy moving forward as well.
So do we have a deadline as to when? I mean, are those going to be scheduled this week to have two-two-ones, and then the policy is going to be set to be done by next Wednesday? I mean, what's the timeframe? Can we, can we get a timeframe as, like, a deadline?
We can certainly do whatever the commission wants in terms of a deadline. I would, I would guess that the two-two-ones wouldn't begin until next, next week. If you want this on the following, next week's agenda, we can have a policy for next week's agenda. I mean, it's, it's entirely up to the commission. County staff doesn't set the deadlines. It's up to the commission.
I mean, I just, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but, I mean, you probably don't want to have to come up here again, and, you know, I mean, I think it's important for us to maybe get it, get it on the calendar, get it scheduled, get it done, and move on. Because you want your road, I mean, we, we need these things accomplished. So that's kind of where I'm at. Is everybody feeling like that?
We need the ability to, to ask for that. So I, I agree with you. Thank you very much for your, for your support. But, you know, that's what this, as I understand, this policy provides the ability for you to help us, should we ask.
Right, and I, and I think that, let you know that I had promised that I'd submit comments on the document as presented for the first time for us a few weeks ago. I've done that, and, and I had mentioned before that I want to assure transparency to all the citizens of the township, and I want to assure financial responsibility ultimately that it's not, doesn't cost the rest of the Sedgwick County residents the money.
That's fair.
So those are, those are both within the changes that I had submitted.
We're not asking you to pay for it. We're not asking you to do anything for free. I mean, should we be part of Sedgwick County and, and not a township, then that'd be a different story. We'd be standing up here saying, "Why haven't you fixed our roads?" We understand it's our responsibility, and it's our budget, and it's our, you know, we need to fix that.
Okay.
And that would be my goal.
Chairman, to Commissioner Cruz's point, we do not have a meeting next week. We could have policy back by July one for the commission to look at, to okay to move on to the townships, not to ratify it, but to move on to townships by July one. We can then mail it to the townships, and then set a meeting with them, either during their normal summer session or something ad hoc, and then schedule the ratification of the policy after that. So we have policy back by July one, if that's the role of the board.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think one of the challenges in this has been that commissioners, I believe, feel like this is going to be potentially upsetting to the townships, and so they wanted to give them a chance to weigh in. And they wanted to do this at the August social. Again, we don't even know if that social's going to happen or not. That, that's still to be determined, and so I, I would rather see us not wait until August. I think we need to go ahead and just schedule a meeting with the townships, if that's what we need to do. Not to repeat what I said last week, I don't think this is being harsh on townships. I think it just clarifies what's in statute, and allows them essentially due process, structure, or framework, how this would happen. To me, it's very, it's the right thing to do, just clarifies the, the steps we should follow to exercise the, the statute that's already in place. But anyway, Mr. Manager, I would, I would, I think we ought to go ahead and just plan on scheduling a meeting with the townships, and I think we ought to do that sooner, as soon as the policy's ready for, if we take a look at. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a great day, be safe.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, special meeting minutes of May twenty-seventh, 2020.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the minutes from the May twenty-seventh meeting. Any corrections or additions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve in second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring Pat Hanrahanday.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation. You have a copy of it. I'd like to read it. Pat is not here to accept that, but we do have a plaque in recognition of his dedication and service. I'd like to read, whereas the majority of Pat Hanrahan's career as a United Way executive was spent at the United Way of the Plains, where he dedicated his life to serving the people of South Central Kansas after taking over as president of United Way of the Plains in nineteen eighty-five. And whereas Pat leaves a legacy of organizational growth and increased financial contributions at the United Way, we recognize the passion for lifelong learning and giving back to the community that he has exhibited, even in the face of challenging circumstances. And whereas the extensive list of accomplishments that Pat has contributed to the United Way of the Plains further emphasizes the impact he has had on this community, the innovation he has pioneered, and the new heights that he has helped the organization reach. And whereas notable examples of his accomplishments are creating a statewide two-one-one telephone information and referral system, and establishing venture grants, which provide startup funding for several nonprofits, including the Boys and Girls Club. And whereas the visionary leadership of Pat has helped connect community members in need with vital resources and services to help them thrive and move forward in life, we recognize the pivotal role that Pat Hanrahan has played in the growth of the United Way of the Plains during his tenure as president and CEO. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman Pete Meitzner, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize June seventeenth today as Pat Hanrahanday, June seventeenth, 2020. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I'll make a motion to approve. Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
And for the public, this is the plaque that we will be presenting. I believe you'll be receiving this plaque tomorrow at a, in a special meeting, on their board meeting. So, thank you, Pat, if you're watching, appreciate your service. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item C, adoption of the June twenty-twenty Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Plan update.
Commissioners, we'd like to change the, make a motion to change the order of the business and move those later, and at this point, move, move Item E, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Cares Act, up to this item. So I, I move that, we move Item E up. Been motion and seconded. Any objections? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
So, Item E, Madam Clerk.
Item E, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Chairman, thank you for switching the agenda a little bit today. Dr. Menz is here, and in the interest of his time, we wanted to move this up. We have two components to the cares discussion this morning. First, Dr. Menz will get up, and he'll kind of talk about three things, and then answer any questions for the board. One issue he will talk about is antibody testing. He will talk about masks, and he will kind of talk about the numbers in Sedgwick County. Depending on the will of the board, antibody testing could turn into a request for cares dollars, so that's why it's on this particular agenda item. And then after Dr. Menz is done, Lindsay will get up and give an update on the assessment, which is ongoing, as well as some other internal items from the county in relation to care. So we'll start with Dr. Menz. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Dr. Menz? I apologize for the delay in your being here, but...
Got things to do.
You got to see Sedgwick County government at work.
That's right. Harold Menz, County Health Officer. I'd like to thank you for letting me come here today, although I will ask Mr. Stoltz, next time there's penguins coming, I wish you would give me some warning. I felt underdressed when they came in. If I'd known, I'd worn my tuxedo. But no one told me, so...
Thank you. That, that's Tom's fault. We will, so noted, so noted.
He needs to enlighten me on the dress code. I thank you for letting me come here today. I, I want to acknowledge, as I, before I start, that this has been a very stressful time since February until now. I know the public has been stressed out, I know we're all stressed out. None of us predicted this, none of us saw it coming, and it's had a major impact upon our society and all of us. I can speak for that personally, as well as for everyone I know who's feeling the effect of it. However, our goal is, is to keep this disease from overtaking our health care facilities to the point that we can't take care of the patients that need to come for other reasons. We want to keep the caseload as low as possible, because even the people that don't need to go to the hospital would prefer not to get this illness, and would prefer not to be off work for two weeks, or have a, a serious illness that makes them feel very bad. And we'd like to keep the death rate as low as possible. Even though this disease affects the utterly disproportionately, we still have had young people that have serious illness, ICU admissions, and in some cases, death, not necessarily in this county, but in this state. So that is our overall goal, and till we can figure out how to get a better way to control this virus, that's what we got to live with. So I was asked to speak a little bit more about this antibody test issue, and what is the utility of antibody tests? In order to do so, I'm going to have to get a little bit into the science of antibodies, and how they're useful, and how, in some cases, they're not too useful. So any test we have in medicine, particularly antibody tests, have a certain degree of inaccuracy. We like to have an antibody test that is one-hundred percent correct, but there are very few out there that are one-hundred percent correct. So for instance, we like to see if we have a test for a disease of any kind, when we give it to a hundred people, that we know have the disease, does it always turn out positive? And if we give it to a group of people that don't have the disease, does it always turn out negative? Unfortunately, there are very few tests like that. So the antibody test has what we call a certain false positive rate. That means if you give it to a hundred people that don't have the disease, it will come back positive on a certain percentage of those people. If the test is ninety-nine percent good, but it's still one percent inaccurate, out of a hundred people with that, without that disease, one will come up positive, and we will call that a false positive. We have to teach our students at my medical school how they have to know those statistics on each test they do, and how they need to know how to handle the possibility of a false positive. I won't go into why there's false positive. It gets into complexity of the science, gets into complexity of the biochemistry, and the makeup of the body, and the makeup of these antibodies. So I'm just going to use this board, if that's okay. Set. Bear with me. So say we have a test that's ninety percent, ninety-nine percent accurate. I'll just use the word accurate. For simplicity, I'm just going to say, say we have a group of people, a hundred people that we're testing. We give the test to a hundred people, and of those patients, let's assume that none of them had the disease today. But because it's only ninety percent, ninety-nine percent accurate, one patient's going to pop up with a positive test, and yet they don't have the disease. Okay? That make sense? So if we have a separate test, and it shows that most, in a different setting, that most, it's a mixture, fifty percent have the disease, fifty percent don't, still, the people who don't have it, one will probably pop up positive. The ones who have it, they will have positive tests, too. Let's take these hundred people, and say only one has the disease, fairly rare disease, most people don't have it. We give the test to the whole group, that one person will pop up positive because they actually have the disease. We'll still have, out of the ninety-nine that don't have the disease, one pop up that doesn't have the disease. Equal numbers. We got two people that popped up positive. Which one's got it? We have to move on to other factors, which I'm not going to bore you with, to try and figure that out, which one's really got it. On the other hand, if we take a hundred people, and fifty of them, half of them, have the disease, much more common disease, pretty common out in the society. Those who get the test, fifty will come up... Those who get the test, 50 will come up positive because they have disease, the rest of them won't. But still, of the 50 remaining who don't have the disease, it's likely one will come up positive. Now, this case is a little easier to handle, because we can say, by far, the majority of those 51 people have got the disease. And so we can proceed as if most of them had disease, although this one will have to watch and do some more study. So my point is, the comparison between the false positives and the true positives, the ratio between those depends on how common the disease is, what we call the prevalence. You with me? And we have to teach our medical students how to handle this dilemma. And they have to realize, if you have a very rare disease, you're going to have as many positives in people who don't have it as you have in the people who actually have the disease. I'll give you an example. We're not sure Lyme disease exists in Kansas. We're not sure the ticks here carry Lyme disease. The ticks in Connecticut, a lot of them carry it. So Lyme disease is very common in Connecticut. If I do the Lyme test in Connecticut and it comes up positive, I can be pretty sure that patient's got the disease. If I do a Lyme test here in Kansas, it's very unlikely. This is probably a false positive, and I better look at some other diseases, because that's probably not Lyme disease, and I'm probably not going to treat him until we get that figured out. So the percent of false positives stays the same with the test, because it inherited the test. But the number of true positives changes with how common the disease is. So the comparison between these numbers changes as the prevalence gets greater. So let's take it to COVID. As best I can calculate, we've had about, we know we've had about 700 cases of COVID in Sedgwick County so far, 750, something like that. I'm just going to take that up to 1,000. We probably missed some. So I'm going to say, 1,000 people in Sedgwick County have had COVID so far. And those 1,000 probably should have antibodies. But this is a county of 500,000 people. So you can subtract that number that have had it, the 1,000, from 500,000, you still have 499,000 people that haven't had it. And yet of those 499,000, 1% is going to have a positive test, and they don't have So in that case, we think the prevalence of COVID in this country, in this county, is 1,000 people out of 500,000, that's 0.1%. Thank goodness, it's fairly rare in our county so far. That's where we want to keep it. And if those, if we do the test then, widely on this community, just everybody who wants to be tested, we're going to have about 5,000 people... I'm sorry, 500 positive, and yet we're going to have about 4,000, we're going to have a few fewer over here, 409, that are going to be falsely positive. So the true positives and the false positives are going to be equal. As long as the prevalence is as low as it is right now, the true positives are going to be about equal to the false positives. And so we got this dilemma. Who's really positive? Will the real COVID stand up, please? And that's going to require a lot of other testing, and we sure can't tell the people who are equal to the number who really have had the disease, that you're safe to go back to work, because you can't get the disease. That's not true. These are false positives. They're still not immune. Now, if we get up to the point where 20% of the population of Sedgwick County has had the disease in the past, okay? That means 100,000, Tom, I'm going to have to put some more marker in the budget here. That means 100,000 people will have a positive test. Over here, we'll have about, since we have a larger, a smaller group now, that hasn't had the disease, it'll be about 5,000, 4,000 will be positive falsely when we do the test. Well, now, we can get up to where, if you're positive, we're pretty sure you've had it. So as the frequency of the disease, the frequency of the infection rises, the accuracy of this test gets better, even though the overall accuracy as a percentage is still not where we want it. 99% is pretty good, though. There's very few tests in medicine that are that good. This is a problem we have to deal with, when we have rare diseases, uncommon diseases. So my point is, hopefully, we won't get up to the place where 20% of the Sedgwick County residents have had this disease. I hope we can keep it down here, where this test is not going to tell us who's immune and who's not. Now, the second factor I have to mention, to this day, no one has proven that the presence of antibodies, even on the people who have actual antibodies, is protective. We don't have the science yet. Theoretically, you would think it would be, but we don't have the science yet. There are some disease where having in the past doesn't necessarily mean you're immune from it. Antibodies are not always the factor that determines whether you're immune or not. There are other mechanisms of our immune system that can fight disease that are more important in some diseases than the antibodies are. So my point is, one, because we're going to have, our disease frequency is so low in this county, that we're going to have equal false positives to true positives with the test. And secondly, we don't know yet, the science is not there yet, whether having antibodies protects you or not with this disease. Unfortunately, we've only had this disease about four months, and the science is still evolving. We, we've been scrambling just to take care of the patients. We haven't had the resources and the time to do as much research as we'd like. We hope we have more, we understand this virus better in a year or so, but the science just isn't there yet. The other problem we have, is there are so many companies making the antibody test, and some of them are worthless. The FDA just let the companies release them, and said, we'll figure out whether they're accurate or not later. Now the FDA's pulling them back in, saying, you got to prove your test accurate before we let you put on the market, but you're already on the market. So even there, we have a problem with which company's antibody test we're going to choose. Some of them are not 99% accurate. Some of them are much less than that, and that's going to compound this problem. We'll even have more false positives. So today, I would have to tell you, and I have to do some research to figure out which test you're going to do, if you're going to do it, because some of the companies making it, it's, it's not worth using. It's so inaccurate. I'm sorry if I bored you.
No, not at all.
But it, it, I don't like it. I wish we had a better test. I wish we had more knowledge about this. But I don't wish the frequency of this disease in this county was so high that we could rely upon the test. We don't want to get there. Now, the state has announced they're going to start doing some antibody screening in this state. They're merely doing that to figure out what the prevalence of the disease is, how many people. If they do the test, and they only end up with 5,000 positive cases, they're going to say, that's how many false positives we would expect. So the disease must be rarely low prevalence. If, on the other hand, they end up with 100,000 people are positive, that far outweighs the false positives. So that means a fifth of our population probably has been infected. But they're doing it merely to determine prevalence, how frequent this is, and I've talked to the state health officer, he says, I'm not advocating this at all, to help to determine who's immune, and therefore is safe going around this virus. It is not there yet. The science is not there. The reliability of this test is not there yet. That's not why we're doing it. We just want to determine how many people in the state have been infected. Questions?
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. That's helpful, and probably worth the public to understand this if they want to watch. So, felt like I was back in college again a little bit.
Well, it's a little, it's, it's all difficult to explain.
Understand. So Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions. I read in the newspaper just a couple of days ago, that the test that we're giving to tell whether you've got COVID or not, isn't totally accurate either. So we're relying on that, but it's still going to give us false positives and false negatives and so forth. So it appears that no test is 100% accurate. But the concern I've had all along is that the test we're giving now, that nasal swab test, is only, and, and the paper said it's not 100% accurate, is, is only applicable on the instant that that person took that test. The next day or the next hour, they may contract the virus. And you used the word prevalence, that, that's what I've been saying all along, is that we want to know what the prevalence of this disease is in our community. And the, since the test that we're giving right now is a snapshot, it's not going to tell us the prevalence, because we don't know what's going to happen next hour or next day. And so I, I've been trying to find some method that we can get, instead of a snapshot, a motion picture, and that's the analogy I've used over and over again. And the motion picture is the prevalence. How much, how widespread is this in the community? And it appears that the state of Kansas is interested in this too, or they wouldn't be advocating that we start doing some antibody testing, so that we can find this prevalence in the community. So if, if, if it's important, and I think it is, why, why would you recommend we don't spend money to do the test for the antibodies, at least to start finding out what the prevalence is in our community?
So the tests are used for two different indications. The antibody test is, will tell us how many people have had it. Most of them will have recovered. They had it some time, but they're recovered. The antigen test you're talking about, the PCR, is telling us who is infected today and transmitting the virus to others. The antibody test doesn't tell you that. Once they have the antibody, the virus is probably gone.
Well, I agree with you, because the virus has gone out of that individual, but we don't know that.
The test for the PCR, which is what we're using, is, we're using it for a different issue. We don't feel we have false positives with that test. It may not be 100% sensitive. That's another side of the coin. I'm not going to get into sensitivity today. There are cases that are early in their disease, and the test may come back negative the first time we do it. If we do it a couple of days later, it's positive. But once it's positive, that means the patient has the disease. It's not a false positive. Those patients need to be isolated, they need to be taken out of the public, so they're not transmitting to others, and they need to be watched closely for deterioration. This is asking a different question. How common is the disease in the population right now? We know in Sedgwick County, at most, we've had 1,000 cases. And so the prevalence in this county is so low, the antibody test, even if it was good, and we don't know for sure which vendor has got a good test yet, the false positives are going to be equal, and we won't know which individual patient. And that tells us the prevalence of active disease at this moment. It's not telling us how many people in society have had the disease, because once you recover, this test, the PCR, we use is negative, which, it's only positive for a couple of weeks. So I'm sorry, this is getting into medicine and diagnostic tests, what question you're trying to answer. You could do a point prevalence and use the PCR to determine how many people at any one time are infected with the virus. This is telling us how many have been infected since January.
But I think that that's an answer that we need. The state of Kansas is looking for that answer.
So when the health...
Why wouldn't we be looking for that answer at the county level?
I believe the state is going to record which counties they're doing it in. I was told by the state health officer that if it was him, he would wait and let the state take on this project, and for them to pay for it, and they can, and see what the state finds. If the state finds, there's hardly any cases in the entire state compared to how big the state is, 2.8 million, there really isn't much use to dissect down to individual counties.
But you're saying, we just need to wait for the state to decide whether or not they want to test anybody in Sedgwick County, but we have the ability to do it ourselves? Why wouldn't we do that? That's my question.
I think the state would not neglect testing in Sedgwick County. They're going to, they're going to...
But we can order those today. We can vote and say we want to do that, and now instead, we're waiting for the state of Kansas to make up their mind, and who knows when it's going to happen? Why wouldn't we want to know what the prevalence is in Sedgwick County? That's my question over and over.
I have the announcement from the state here. At least the statewide strategy is the four types of testing facilities. Implication, this was on June 12th, the implication was they were going to get started right away. If you want to get into the debate about waiting on the state or what, I think you should contact the state health officer and find out what their timeline is, and you'll decide...
But you're a health officer. Why wouldn't you make a recommendation that we want us to know what the prevalence is in Sedgwick County? That's what baffles me.
I've tried to explain it. I'm sorry I haven't been effective in explaining it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions here. Is KU doing an antibody test, sort of a study on antibodies related to COVID-19? Are they involved in doing some type of an antibody study in KU?
The, they're doing studies on the use of antibody infusions into the patients who are seriously ill. In other words, they're taking serum from people who recovered, they assume it's got antibodies in it, and they're giving it to some of the very sick patients to see if the antibody does anything. So they're in the midst of doing those studies now. The results are not known yet.
So they're, they're not, they're not doing antibody testing on, on the community in any...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. Appreciate that. I just want to, first of all, I would like to say, appreciate you being here today. I would love an opportunity to sit down and actually chat over a cup of coffee.
Okay.
I think that's, we deserve a little time with you to, to, you know, to have maybe a deeper understanding of some of these issues. And I, I, I don't want to bore my colleagues or the public with my endless questions here, but I just want to ask you a couple little ones, I guess. We talk about a vaccination that may be available maybe later this year. I think that's, again, would be awesome if it was available. We don't know for sure if it's coming, what date, when it will come. But if you could please describe, if you will, if someone wants to get a vaccination, my understanding of vaccinations is, they're injecting, if you will, something that looks like the COVID-19 virus. It's not, it's not a live cell, it's a, essentially a copycat of, of what would look like COVID-19 to the body. And the body's response to that is it creates the antibodies. Is that a fair way to describe that?
It creates an immune response, one component of which is antibodies, but there are other immune effectors that the body produces besides antibodies. Like I said before, your immune system has many modalities to kill invading organisms, one of which is antibody, but also has other mediators besides antibody.
If, yeah, thank you for the answer. If someone was to actually have contracted COVID-19 or been exposed to it, and the body response would be to create the same response, whether it was done through a vaccination or through exposure, is that fair?
Yep.
If someone was to receive a vaccination, would you, would you say to that person if they're immune from COVID-19?
That is part of the development of the vaccine. Once they get it developed, they're now in the safety trials to make sure the vaccine that's being developed doesn't harm the patient. Once they have felt comfortable, they've proven that, then they have to find out, does it really create immunity? It's not a given. They've had vaccines in the past that did not create immunity, did not protect you from the disease, and that means they have to start all over. And that's why vaccines take years to develop normally. But they're fast-tracking this virus. I mean, sorry, they're fast-tracking this vaccine development.
I guess my question really is, assuming, assuming we, we develop a really great vaccination, and it is very effective on COVID-19, I don't, I don't know we would actually use the word that someone would be immune, but that may be too strong of a word. I mean, I think even other vaccinations we receive today, I'm not going to get into vaccination debates today, but other vaccinations, sometimes people still contract the disease even though they have been vaccinated. I mean, that does happen, right?
And that's my point. They have to prove what its efficacy is. For, as you know, the influenza vaccine has not been near as effective as we would like, even though it does reduce the disease burden. On the other hand, some vaccines, like tetanus, polio, measles, very effective. You don't get the disease if you've had those vaccinations.
Very good. I, I do appreciate the, the illustration on the paper this morning. I do understand the point you're making, and I think that if, if we were to test a large number of people in our community, and we had, let's say, 1% that tests positive for antibodies, it really doesn't tell us much. And I, I understand that. But if we had, you know, something much higher than that, do, do you think that would be valuable to know that? If, if the numbers came back, and they say we had 10 or 15, 20% of the people tested... If the numbers came back and they say we had 10 or 15, 20% of the people tested positive for antibodies, would that be valuable for us to know that?
If we can prove in the future with this vaccine development those antibodies actually kill the virus and prevent you from getting it, that would be valuable to know.
Okay. Well, I, I do think there's value in the antibody test. I would continue to advocate for it for other reasons. I think that if someone, I understand it's, it's good to know what the community spread is. I think that's very important. I think that's why the state's interested in, in doing that testing. On an individual level, I don't want to give someone a false sense of security. I think that's the concern.
Right.
But if someone did have a test, knowing, knowing that there's a risk of false positives or even false negatives, not to put too much weight into the results, but more than likely, again, if it's 99% accurate, 99% of that, if they said you have, you tested positive, you have antibodies in your system, not to say you're immune, and not to say that there's not a possibility that's a, that's a false positive, but at least they would have some, I guess, comfort, if you will, knowing that they are less, most likely, less likely to contract the disease. And I just think that's assuring to many people.
It would be up to the individual to determine what they think, what their risk and security is. How, I would tell you though today, any of our physicians who are in the ICU at each of their hospital taking care of these COVID patients, if you test them for antibodies positive, none of them will go in that room without their mask and their security suits on. They, they do not have the confidence this test is going to protect them from those patients. They're not going to take the risk getting the disease from those patients today. Now, in the future, maybe we'll know that the antibodies are effective, and maybe in that case, they wouldn't feel the need to be so protected from those patients.
Dr. Minz, thank you for your answers, and I hope I can buy you a cup of coffee.
Sure.
We can spend a little more time with this.
Sure.
I've got other questions, but not today.
Okay, that's fine. May I go on, or is there more questions?
Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Well, I am curious to hear what else you have to say, but I guess my, my main concern is we, we don't know if the antibody protects you. We don't know a reputable company to buy the test from. I mean, we scrutinize tractor companies more than we're scrutinizing this company. So, I mean, for me, it's all about if we're going to be spending money on tests that, from my understanding, are pretty expensive, not knowing the total need of our community yet for this COVID money, for the CARES money, I think we have to be prudent in how we spend this money. And spending money on a test that we're not sure works creates this false sense of security. We don't know what company it's coming from and how reputable the test is. Those are my concerns, and, but I'm curious to hear kind of what else you were, you were going to mention.
I wasn't going to say any more about the antibody test.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good. Please proceed, doctor.
Just want to say a little bit about the numbers. I don't know if all of you have access to the report that we have prepared recently on the numbers. Do you have this, Health Department prepares this on the weekly numbers? It's on our website.
I think we received that yesterday, but I don't have a copy of it. Could we get a copy of that, Kate or somebody?
Looks like some of you have it.
We'll get you a hard copy.
This shows by week what our numbers have been doing, and it's got on the left-hand column, it's got a number of the criteria we've been looking at. I will say we're fortunate. Yesterday, our numbers showed we had 17 people in the hospitals here. Not all of them were on the ventilator, but not all of them were in the ICU, but that's about the number we had. Do you need this to? So, and I've talked to the hospital C, chief medical officers, and right now, they got things under control. We're not overwhelmed. We haven't seen a significant increase in hospital cases lately, so we're feeling good about that. However, if you look at the other parameters, including just the number of cases we're seeing, we've seen an increase in the cases that we're seeing over the last week. We have corrected that for the number of screenings that we're doing, and it's up regardless of the number of screenings we're doing. We have deleted the clusters from that number and just looked at the things that appear to be community cases, not cluster cases, and those numbers are going up. So we have seen an increase in this last week. Three previous weeks have been pretty flat, and now we're seeing an inflection going up. It's not doubled, but it's going up. That is of concern. I was concerned first week of June that with the Memorial Day activities and the demonstrations we were having in the streets, and the fact that we did allow some different venues to open up in the city, that we might see more cases. I don't know if any of those factors led to this increase last week, but it has gone up last week. So I'm just saying it's, I think as a time, we need to stay cautious. I'm not advocating going back on closing businesses or anything like that, but I do, the numbers are up. It's not due to clusters. It's not due to increase, it's not all due to clusters, it's not all due to increased testing. So I just wanted to mention that to you, and if you wish to look this over a little bit more detail, I think it explains those things. Lastly, I know there's been some questions about some of the recommendations that have been made by the CDC and how effective they are. I know in particular, there's been a lot of community disagreement and uncertainty about the effectiveness of the mask. I regret that the CDC originally came out in February and said that masks didn't seem to be so important, but after further research, they kind of changed their minds, and now they're saying they think masks do have a lot of utility. So let me put it this way. We don't think we're going to have a vaccine any sooner than January 1st of 2021. That's optimistic. It may be longer than that. We don't have any drugs right now that decrease the disease, certainly no oral drugs. So for, it looks like for the next seven months, even in the optimistic situation, we have limited tools in our toolbox to keep this disease at bay. So what do we have? Well, we could try to keep people importing it in from other countries and other states, travel restrictions, but those are hard to enforce, very difficult. We will be continuing, the Health Department is going to continue to do screenings, drive-throughs, and identifying who's positive at that moment, and then finding out who their contacts have been, and test their contacts, and then ask those people to be, remain isolated for at least two weeks so that they're not transmitting it to the public, trying to decrease the transmission rate by identifying the active cases as quickly as we can. That's the second tool we have in our toolbox. That's pretty effective, if you can carry that, and I think we're doing a good job.
Yeah.
And I want to, at this point, commend our Health Department personnel. I think you have one of the best Health Department personnel for this disease of any county in the state. I can't say that for sure because I haven't worked with Johnson County and Wyandotte County closely, but they are working seven days a week. Seven days a week, they are active, they're looking at the cases, they're posting it, preparing reports, and I am very impressed with their technical expertise. So I think we need to be very grateful that we have a Health Department that's, at the right time, was available to handle this, this condition. The last thing we have to do to keep this disease at bay is our behavioral characteristics of our community, trying to help our community to keep transmitting it from the people who have it to the people that don't. I know this is a pain. People don't like it. It's inconvenient, it's disruptive, but we don't have much else. So we need to keep reminding the companies that it's good that they're having six-foot increments on their checkout lanes. It's great that they're having Plexiglas to protect their cashiers. We need to continue that. For those who don't need to get out, particularly the elderly who are very risk of disease, it's probably wise to stay at home as much as you can. That doesn't mean you have to be jailed in your home as much as you can. And then lastly, is these things. I don't like them particularly. Doesn't bother me that much, but I do have a couple articles here that I'd be happy to share with you that do show some early scientific information that the masks do decrease the rate of spread. I don't know if somebody wants to take that. And that even the cloths mask have some utility. So why is this? We think when people cough or speak, they're emitting little micro droplets of saliva or nasal pharyngeal material in which the virus is in. And if those little droplets land on somebody else, or their hands touch somebody who has it on their hands from itching their nose, they can transmit to that person, and when they scratch their nose, they've now inoculated themselves. When people cough or speak, they're emitting little bitty micro particles. You can't see them unless someone really says a lot of Ps in a row. So if you're doing the Pied Piper poem to your kids, you're probably emitting them a little bit more commonly than other speech. Or if you're shouting, you're emitting more of those little micro particles. We think the masks do attenuate, not necessarily stop. The viruses are not just floating in the air as a single virus. They're in these micro droplets, and we think these masks are fairly good, 100% at stopping those micro droplets. Now, so you may have seen a commercial on TV lately of a retail entity in town who doesn't just put a price tag on things, they make offers to people, and they show the guy getting ready to make an offer to someone about the purchase, and as they walk up to the desk to give the offer to the patron, they're handing out headphones to other customers. And then they sit down and they give the offer, and the customer screams, "I can't believe this," and they show the wind blowing papers everywhere, and things fly in people's face. Now, that patient should have had a mask on. She's inoculating a lot of people. So I'm not here to tell you the mask is great. I'm not telling you it's the best thing, but what do we have? What do we have in our toolbox? And if this mask keeps a neighbor from getting it, it's mainly there to protect you from getting it if you have the virus unknowingly. It's not so much to protect you from breathing in the virus, it's to stop your droplets from depositing out there and getting on someone's hands or getting in their face if you're up close to them. That's why we have the six-foot rule. If, if that keeps a couple of patients from getting admitted to the ICU, I'm willing to pay that price personally. I'm willing to do that because I don't have a lot of other tools to offer society, which I regret. So these articles, if you wish, you can read them. They claim that there is some element of science that suggests they are somewhat beneficial in reducing the transmission of this virus. They're not perfect. They're not as good as the masks that the doctors wear. So mainly, I just want to say, we're all trying to do the same thing. We're trying to get through this without causing more mental health issues. We're trying to get through this without causing any more economic damage, but we do need to do what we can to keep this virus from increasing, and the last week, we have seen the cases going up. We don't, we want to stop that. We don't want it to go up higher. And I've given you the three tools we had to do that, and they're not as potent as I would like. Any questions?
Yeah, the, the three tools, and there's a couple of questions, Dr. Minz. The three tools, the travel restrictions would be-
Now, this virus first got here by people bringing it into the country and then spreading from the east and west coast to Kansas.
So travel restrictions would be difficult, as you said.
Those are difficult.
But screening, contact tracing, remaining two weeks in isolation, you've, you've given a, a good affirmative compliment.
It's one of the most potent tools we have, is getting people out of society, out of circulation as soon as we can identify them.
So that's the second one, that we, as the commission and Board of Health, can help continue to support in a, in a large, large way. The third one is this behavioral characteristics, which we, we, as a commission, can encourage our, our companies and retail and everybody, six-foot increments, Plexiglas, encourage the elderly and those that are at risk to stay at home as much as they can. And the third one there, and that part is, is what you just talked about with masks.
When we're out in society, circulating closely with people.
Correct.
I don't wear this mask in my office, I don't wear it in my car, I don't wear it at home, but if I'm going out to meet with a group of students, I put it on.
Right. Okay, that, that's really, what you've explained there i- is very helpful, and you said at this point, you're emphasizing a stay really cautious approach, just as what you said with the tools, and you're not recommending that we close businesses or, or things like that yet, or not yet.
I acknowledge the damage that we did to the economy with closing businesses. I think we're at a level now where we don't need to do that, but we, we can't let this level get out of control.
So we can help support and elevate the behavioral characteristics category you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And I will assure you, as soon as we have a vaccine that works and I get my dose, I'm going to burn all these I have. Not quite.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Wait, Dr. Minz, Commissioner Hal has a question, please.
Thank you, thank you again for the information. I do have a couple of questions. Number one, on the N95 mask, I've noticed there's a, what appears to be a vent hole in that. I, I think it's an exit port. Can you confirm that?
Well, the purpose of the N95 is not so much to protect others around you, but to protect you from inhaling the droplets that are very microscopic. So that valve closes on inhalation, but then it opens up when you exhale to help the air get out so you don't feel so claustrophobic.
Right. Well, again, so you ought to, we ought to differentiate between different kinds of masks because you said a minute ago that if you're wearing a mask, if you have the virus, you could protect others from getting it, but if you're wearing an N95 mask in that situation, it really wouldn't. Would that be a fair statement?
It depends on the kind you have. Mostly the N95s we're using in the city don't have that valve on it. They're just a solid mask.
Just a filter membrane that goes across.
A solid mask.
I actually had a friend who relayed a story to me. He was actually wearing an N95 mask and sneezed, and he was using his phone at the moment, and, you know, his sneeze went basically onto the phone, and he was surprised by it. And so it opened my eyes.
That's not the kind of mask they should be wearing.
It just shows you that it doesn't stop the virus if you're, if you're using that type of a mask.
Right, that's correct.
And so it does help the person who's wearing the mask. So you have to understand, I think, having that deeper understanding, I think, is very useful for everyone. You mentioned a minute ago about hospital trends. You said there was 17, I believe, what you said, 17 in hospitals today?
That's what the report on Monday said.
Okay. Well, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, you came here and you said there was 11, and that was very useful, by the way, and I want to say I appreciate you sharing that information. I have, I have been frustrated because as a member of the Board of Health here, I think the most objective number we have, we talk about slowing the spread and protecting our hospitals, we have to know our hospital admission rates. I'm going to ask you, Dr. Minz, would you please ensure that the county commissioners are able to access hospitalization admission rates for COVID-19? I think we need to know that number. It's the most objective number we have. I mean, you're talking about 200 active cases or 250 active cases. That's not as useful because we don't know how many of them are asymptomatic, for example. What we do need, what we do know is hospitalizations are critically important for us to understand. And I would love to continue to get that information, if that's okay.
This is, this is published every day, this report.
I do not get that, sir.
And it has a column here, currently hospitalized, recovered, home.
Can you make sure that we have a way to get access to this document each day, please?
Yes, I will.
I believe, I believe those numbers that Dr. Minz just gave you are on the dashboard every day, sir.
I have been looking at the dashboard every single day for a long time.
We'll double check that, sir.
They do have, okay. One other, one other question I have is, Dr. Minz, out of all the things we've heard about how to, how to mitigate the risk of transmission, we've talked about washing hands and social distancing and wearing masks. If I understand correctly, when you speak in, when you speak with someone in your, in your close proximity to each other, that's when the masks become useful.
Most useful, yes.
But doesn't the virus also go into the eyes, for example? Is that another way that someone can receive the virus?
Usually that's from people scratching their nose and then rubbing their eyes. That's why we wash hands and things like that.
Okay. And then I guess I would like to say, if someone had the choice between social distancing, staying far, far from other people and maybe not wearing a mask, or being next to someone else and wearing a mask, which is more dangerous in your opinion?
You know, and I'm not trying to wheeze a lot of answering you, but there's a lot of things, again, we haven't had time to test, and some of them are very hard to test. I don't know of any studies that have compared the two.
I guess my point is this, I see lots of people who think that because they wear a mask, the social distancing is not important. And I was going to make a point here, that if, if, if they believe that, we're also essentially embracing, if you will, a false sense of security on that aspect. That's not probably true. I think the mask, as you said, it, it suppresses or it attenuates, if you will, to some degree. And I think that's, based in theory, obviously, I think that's true, but it doesn't stop the virus. And my, my point is, if someone really wants to be protected, ignoring social distancing and, and wearing a mask is frankly not the right strategy here. So if we wanted to encourage the best behaviors, it's all the things we've talked about, but maybe out of all the things we've talked about, the one that probably has the greatest impact is social distancing. impact is social distancing. That's my opinion. You're welcome to comment on that, but that's my comments and questions. Thank you.
I would include that in our toolbox, those behavioral issues. And I feel we need to take care of all of them because we need to keep this virus at bay as best we can. Everyone's important. But I agree, the six-foot distancing, very important.
Okay. Dr. Minz, Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, I want you to address some misleading information around masks and carbon dioxide. Can you talk about that? Because I've had some folks who have shared some posts, have asked me questions about wearing a mask and breathing in CO2. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, I haven't seen these posts, so I don't know exactly what they're claiming. The N95s are, they're tight. So, but when you breathe out, the air's got to go somewhere, so it goes around the mask. These masks are mainly a barrier. They're not stopping airflow very well. So I'm not sure, I don't understand what the claim is about CO2.
Just like they're breathing it in instead of exhaling it because the mask is not allowing it to go away from them. So...
These masks are pretty open on the side.
Okay.
I would, I've never seen a patient who had carbon dioxide retention because of wearing a mask.
Thank you. I just wanted, I wanted the public to hear it from you. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Also, I think we have the hospitalizations up.
Right. And I kind of want, maybe give Kate a shot to talk about that. You want to talk about what you put up?
Okay. I'll get the six-foot here.
The information that you just received on the handout from Dr. Minz, it's shared a little bit differently on the dashboard. And so you'll see the hospital admissions and releases. We also have, where is it? The information on demographics. So you'll see there's, the information you have is just in tables, and we've got it in a different format here on the dashboard. So age ranges, genders, different demographics like that, it's on the dashboard, but it's just shared a different way.
Top number 791 is the cumulative number of cases we've had in Cedric County today. That's my point, the prevalence is so low.
So let me just chime in here. So again, I understand everything I'm looking at there. The number I want is that number 17 at the bottom of the sheet, and that's not anywhere on the dashboard. I've been asking for this data for the last two months, and I've got it sporadically. I got it from you two weeks ago. I got it from you today. But I've been asking for this data for two months now, and I've been told repeatedly that hospitals will not share it, and I'm not going to be able to get that information, that it's confidential, and that I, that basically, I'm just going to be left in the dark. It's interesting to me that the news media has reported these numbers fairly easily, but for whatever reason, the Board of Health can't get the numbers. And so I appreciate this. I need to make sure I get that number as often as anybody else is getting that number.
Let me make one.
Doctor, could you get the microphone, please? Thank you.
So that report is Cedric County residents hospitalized. Our hospitals also have some cases from Ford County and other patients that were referred in here because their counties couldn't take care of them. So I'm going to make clear, they may have more cases than that's reported.
This is exactly the number I need. Appreciate you so much for clarifying.
I'll work on getting that to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Dr. Minz, thank you. It's been very educational, very helpful, and thanks for the discussion.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you for spending your time.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of the day.
Appreciate it.
Lindsay?
Okay.
Okay, for Lindsay's, Chairman, or a break?
Yeah. Can we take a, let's take a five-minute break. Seven-minute break. We'll be back. 11:05.
About a nine-minute break.
Do you want to go hang out at the boardroom?
Yes, I should try to play or...
Do you want to go hang out at the boardroom?
Somebody dropped the ball.
Do you want to go hang out at the boardroom if you don't come in?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Yes, I'd be here at 9:00. And they're not here.
Do you have that spreadsheet?
But she...
The one that Minz gave everyone?
I guess, I don't, no, I did not. I've got it on my computer, but, and we sent it electronically to the Commissioner.
Yeah. The information there is just not, I mean, there's a great check mark on hospitalization status. It's not the way...
What Commissioner wants is data from Viacristian HCA daily. That's what he's been asking for. And that's, we're not getting there with this, so damn.
Yeah. So, and then we've got two items that's always to be, so we need to have, we need to have.
So this report...
I go with discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and then we've got two items that's always to be, so we need to have, we need to have.
I actually agree with that. We have been asking for the updated hospitalizations, and I thought we had a way to tell everyone this. Yeah.
But in case I'm, it's complicated.
And he's right.
I'm sorry, so question.
I actually agree with that. We have been asking for the updated hospitalizations, and I thought we had a way to tell everyone this.
Yeah.
But in case I, it's complicated.
And he's right.
I'm sorry, so question.
I've been thinking through the work of her, and she was like, what are your home one? And she was just, she was calling, we're going to fix it.
Exactly.
Exactly.
We can't certainly, the Atlantic Trust, we know, we're a simple.
He didn't tell me.
I mean, I knew, one number.
I did, I do think that we need this huge lens and we're fixing this problem.
He told me, Minz, we need to...
His mask!
I can hear it in your voice.
Oh, right. I forgot about that. I forgot, I forgot.
You can patch it, guys. Excuse me.
That is today.
It's different from number 17, and we're getting there. I can understand that. Thank you.
This is such a county residence only? The 17 could be additional counties of people.
And I guess we'd care because it tells whether or not the dark hospitals are where we live.
Right. Yep. So maybe they should say Cedric County hospitals, but include...
No, we just need another chart, and she was told, including another county.
Yeah. What is this? Request to understand COVID impact on operations.
Oh, she sends an email.
Oh, right. Hungry.
I never had one of these before.
Really?
But I think that's what you said. I'm not saying it's true.
Thanks, Mike.
Appreciate the support, it's all...
Okay, may I allow...
Getting texts that the mics are still on.
Tanya? May I lower this? May I lower this microphone? I can't touch it. Okay. Hey, Tony, will you touch the mic? Will you touch it and bring it down just a titch? Thank you. I just don't need it up by my head. That is pretty good. I like that. Wow, it's cold in there.
My mom's favorite. She gets to make the Mikes. Maybe you're crossing country. Do you ever go there? It's a good Springfield, Missouri place.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Welcome back, everybody. We will continue on with the main topic for a few minutes. Welcome back, everybody. So we are a few minutes late, had some technical difficulties, but we're back and we will continue on. Tom, do you have anything to say?
No, sir. Go ahead and get started. Thank you.
Okay. Lindsay, tell us what you're doing. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Poruso, your CFO. So I am continuing discussion on the CARES Agenda item. Of course, Dr. Minz spoke first. I don't have quite the same level of humor to my presentation, so hopefully we'll move through fairly quickly. So the first thing I want to talk about with you is that Notice of Funding opportunity that was put out about a week and a half ago. So far, we have had about 50 responses. Half of those are in the Other Needs category. We have eight each in Social Services and Governmental Assistance categories. We have five in Education and three in Public Health. This closes on Friday. We still very much want to hear from more people. We don't have a particular number in mind, but in my opinion, the more, the better because it makes sure that your strategic plan can be as comprehensive as possible. So just a reminder that folks can get to that form by going to cedriccounty.org, and there is this link just below the banner that says Cedric Cares Notice of Funding Opportunity and Solicitation of Information. And there are some instructions listed there so that people can follow through that, and it should be hopefully a fairly easy exercise for them to complete.
Lindsay, can I interrupt?
Absolutely.
You've had 50 responses.
Yes, sir.
Half of them from where?
The Other Needs category. And so we've seen things all across the board, from private business, not-for-profits, kind of, a little bit of everything.
So half from others. Tell me again the other data.
No problem. So if, we'll just be precise, 26 in Other, eight each in Social Services and Governmental Assistance, five in Education, and three in Public Health.
Okay.
And I would say certainly that Public Health number surprises me a little, and hopefully we'll see that number tick upward by the end of the week. So that is the basic information there. And I would again put out a reminder to folks, I think we're getting a lot of questions about what this actually does. This is just the needs assessment. Again, this informs your strategic plan. And then once your strategic plan is adopted, we'll have applications available for folks to go out and submit for actual reimbursement. So this is not that step. This is just the very beginning step in the process. There will still be more work ahead. So we also, though, just as a reminder, even when you adopt your strategic plan, if there's not a way for the plan itself or for the law with the restrictions that have been on Cedric County, if there's not a way for us to provide support, we still will come to you with a consolidated list of resources that we'll make available on the website for anyone in the community to look at. And also, part of what we'll talk about today, but also part of what we'll hear about from this Notice of Funding opportunity are maybe some needs that exist in the community where there isn't a resource available to provide assistance. And so that could potentially be used by you all as a body to go and do some advocacy if you feel the need for either congressional or state action. So again, if people have questions, we do want to refer them to either our email address or call us for consistency. That email address is cedriccares, all one word, cedriccares@cedric.gov, and the phone number is 660-7148. So can I answer any questions about the Notice of Funding opportunity, or can I move to our next section?
Next section. But thanks for the reminder. I think we've all been probably sharing the Cedric cares and the contact numbers and trying to explain the best we all can about the Notice of Funding. So thank you for repeating it, very much.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that. We appreciate that very much. So the next thing I want to talk about just very briefly is an update on spending associated with COVID. And so in total, between all of our different resources for the COVID spending plus the CARES spending, we are at about $2.8 million from essentially March 2nd is the first date I've seen an expense that started. We've spent $1.1 million in the general fund. That's up about $10,000 from the report I gave you last week. And that $10,000 is mostly for custodial supplies. In the Fire District, we're up to $26,000. We're up slightly over last week, about $500 for some no-contact thermometers. And then we'll get to the CARES spending. So between the outright CARES spending as well as the funding we're using to provide the paid leave that was mandated under the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, we are at a total of $1.6 million. To be precise, $1,588,777. Of that, $1.5 million is just for that direct type of CARES spending. That is up about $185,000 over what we talked about last week. Additions are about $55,000 for custodial supplies. We expect that to continue. Another $32,000 for medical supplies like masks, things like that, gloves. Another $11,000 for cleaning services. Another $45,000 for operating supplies primarily for putting in permanent ski shields and expanding cubicle space to ensure that social distancing can be maintained for when staff return back to the office. Another $36,000 for technology supplies like laptops to enable staff to work from home. And then, of course, we have the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act paid leave. The last time I reported to you, that was $122,740. It is flat because we have not made any additional payments. And there are some instructions listed there so that people can follow through that and it should be hopefully a fairly easy exercise for them to complete.
Lindsay, can I interrupt?
Absolutely.
You've had 50 responses.
Yes, sir.
Half of them from where?
The Other Needs category. And so we've seen things all across the board from private business, not-for-profits, kind of a little bit of everything.
So half from others, tell me again the other data.
No problem. So if we'll just be precise, 26 in Other, eight each in Social Services and Governmental Assistance, five in Education, and three in Public Health.
Okay.
And I would say certainly that Public Health number surprises me a little and hopefully we'll see that number tick upward by the end of the week. So that is the basic information there and I would again put out a reminder to folks. I think we're getting a lot of questions about what this actually does. This is just the needs assessment. Again, this informs your strategic plan. And then once your strategic plan is adopted, we'll have applications available for folks to go out and submit for actual reimbursement. So this is not that step. This is just the very beginning step in the process. There will still be more work ahead. So we also though, just as a reminder, even when you adopt your strategic plan, if there's not a way for the plan itself or for the law with the restrictions that have been on Sedgwick County, if there's not a way for us to provide support, we still will come to you with a consolidated list of resources that we'll make available on the website for anyone in the community to look at. And also part of what we'll talk about today, but also part of what we'll hear about from this Notice of Funding opportunity are maybe some needs that exist in the community where there isn't a resource available to provide assistance. And so that could potentially be used by you all as a body to go and do some advocacy if you feel the need for either congressional or state action. So again, if people have questions, we do want to refer them to either our email address or call us for consistency. That email address is Sedgwick Cares, all one word. Sedgwickcares@sedgwick.gov and the phone number is 660-7148. So can I answer any questions about the Notice of Funding opportunity or can I move to our next section?
Next section, but thanks for the reminder. I think we've all been probably sharing the Cedric Cares and the contact numbers and trying to explain the best we all can about the Notice of Funding. So thank you for repeating it for everybody.
That's great, thank you for sharing that. We appreciate that very much. So the next thing I want to talk about just very briefly is an update on spending associated with COVID. And so in total, between all of our different resources for the COVID spending plus the CARES spending, we are at about 2.8 million. From essentially March 2nd is the first date I've seen an expense that started. We've spent 1.1 million in the general fund. That's up about $10,000 from the report I gave you last week. And that $10,000 is mostly for custodial supplies. In the Fire District, we're up to $26,000. We're up slightly over last week, about $500 for some no-contact thermometers. And then we'll get to the CARES spending. So between the outright CARES spending as well as the funding we're using to provide the paid leave that was mandated under the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, we are at a total of 1.6 million. To be precise, 1,588,777. Of that, 1.5 million is just for that direct type of CARES spending. That is up about $185,000 over what we talked about last week. Additions are about $55,000 for custodial supplies. We expect that to continue. Another $32,000 for medical supplies like masks, things like that, gloves. Another $11,000 for cleaning services. Another $45,000 for operating supplies primarily for putting in permanent ski shields and expanding cubicle space to ensure that social distancing can be maintained for when staff return back to the office. Another $36,000 for technology supplies like laptops to enable staff to work from home. And then of course, we have the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act Paid Leave. The last time I reported to you, that was $122,740. It is flat because we have not made any additional payments since then, but I expect that the next time we'll talk, we'll have a bigger number there. So again, we started with $99,636,917. I just described that roughly 1.6 million in expenses. And so that leaves us today with $98,48,140 in remaining CARES funds. We also know that Elections received some spending authorization to be reimbursed of up to $420,000. When we spoke last week, we were at about $100,000 of spending from there and that has not changed. So that is where we stand on spending. Are there any questions I can answer about that before I move to the final portion of my presentation? Okay.
I don't see any questions, thank you Lindsay.
So we'll jump right in. So in the last couple of weeks, we have asked all of the department heads across the organization to provide feedback on the impact that COVID-19 has had on their operations. And we broke that up into three chunks of time. We said, please tell us what happened from basically March 23rd to May 25th. Then we asked basically what do they expect to happen through the end of this year? And then we asked them to tell us, do they expect any ongoing ramifications from COVID on their operations into 2021 and beyond? And so I am very grateful every department has responded. And that information, I emailed to you last night and I just want to go ahead and cover at a very high level today, some of the common themes. And then you all can have an opportunity to read through that information and certainly we can come back and have future discussion either here or if you have questions you need us to answer, we can get those results. So I'm going to go by category. Initially, when I started this, I hoped to just give you one big summary, but unfortunately Sedgwick County provides so many services, so many different types of services. There wasn't a good, quick, easy way to do that. So I'm going to quickly cover them by the functional areas and we're going to align that to what's in the budget book. So based on that, the first category we're going to talk about is General Government. So that includes things like Finance, HR, IT, Counselor's Office, Clerk, Register of Deeds, Elections, Manager's Office, those types of categories. So we asked them to tell us what has happened with your customer and client interactions, what has happened with managing employees, what has happened with maybe other impacts we didn't call out. We've asked what extra expenses they've had, what lost revenue, excuse me, they've seen. And then finally, to get to the question that I think you all posed to us, which is, are there legislative solutions that need to occur in order to resolve potential issues that they have? So all of that information is included in these summaries. So for General Government, as you probably all are well aware, most of those functions have been able to move staff to work from home. And maybe some services were temporarily suspended at the beginning while the offices were closed. Those are coming back online, maybe in different formats and they expect that they will have generally, as a general theme, reduced hours or changed ways to do business, perhaps trying to push folks to do work online as opposed to come in and fill out forms or that kind of thing. They're asking their staff to wear masks or use PPE when interacting with clients, so gloves maybe. And then they all indicate that they'll likely include those same safety measures, the masks and the PPE into 2021 or at least until there's a widespread vaccine. In terms of Employees and Employee Management, almost everyone has said that there were some complexities introduced by trying to manage folks remotely, but most people feel like they've gotten into a good rhythm and they actually like this, the result and they foresee using this into the future. Maybe not all the time like they have been, but introducing some components of that. There are lots of concerns about mental stress. And I would say, and I'm going to speak for Finance here, certainly with the CARES Act, it's a great problem to have, but it's still a lot of new work. And so that work has shifted to staff. I would say the same thing, you know, I know it is certainly in IT. I can't imagine what they were going through with trying to get everyone set up to telework from the beginning. HR has had a lot of stuff to manage between furloughs and paid leave. I know we've relied heavily on the Counselor's Office for assistance too. So I think everyone has had varying impacts, but still just the nature of the pandemic makes people concerned. We do know that we also have some cost reduction measures in place that are causing some stress like holding positions vacant for 30 days and trying to shift those workloads around. And so that is something that was a stressor. Another area that has had a huge increase is, as you might expect, the Call Center. Also, to some degree, the Mailroom. And so some of the concerns that came out through the legislative discussion is concerns about the volume of mailings that we do for the District Court, the District Attorney and Elections. And if there are issues with the United States Postal Service and if their costs are projected to quadruple or even go up five times, that would have a significant budget impact. And so that is actually, the details of that can be found on the Central Services tab in the spreadsheet I sent you last night if you want to read up on the details of that. But certainly that would be something we would be worried about. Now in terms of talking about legislative solutions, this group had a lot of ideas for potential changes that could make life a little bit easier. I would say one of the biggest obstacles that Finance identified is the potential loss of a declaration of emergency, local disaster emergency, because that provides us some flexibility in getting things procured quickly, which we know in a pandemic certainly we want to have that flexibility. And so that is something that our consultants also have identified as something that we would not want to eliminate because of the problems that that might address. And so hopefully we can keep one in case at the county level and hopefully that will suffice, but certainly for discussion at the state and federal level, that's something that's on the radar. In terms of legislative solutions, you can see that there are seven listed in the summary and I'm going to cover them quickly. Public health law and HIPAA could be changed to allow more information about COVID clusters to be disclosed. Emergency declaration law, powers of the governor could be further clarified. I think that's in the works now. State law could be clarified as to the interaction between the governor's emergency powers and public health powers of local health officer and Board of Health. Clarity and consistency within the statutes as to the enforceability of any orders that might be issued. With the federal Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, it does not have a lot of firm guidelines or interpretations and so some additional guidance on that would be useful. For the CARES Act, we know that there's discussion about loosening the requirements, but in the interest of time and getting these dollars out, we'd like to know what those are sooner rather than later so that you all can make the best possible decisions. We also know that potentially we would like that deadline to extend, but that would be another thing that we would like to know so that you all can properly manage the allocations of those funds over whatever time period is mandated. And then finally, we know, I sent you all the spreadsheet last week, we are expecting a $9 million shortfall in revenues this year, even after some improved collections through May. And so that certainly would be helpful. We also know Calm Care is down and we'll talk about this later in this presentation, but Calm Care is down over $2 million in charges for service through May. And so having some revenue support there would be helpful because their fund balance simply isn't large enough to absorb that in the long term. And so either we find an opportunity for revenue support elsewhere or that becomes an issue where the county may need to provide some property tax support there. So those are General Government, general themes and concerns. Anything I can answer about that before we shift to Public Safety?
No, really good.
Okay. So shifting to Public Safety, we're going to talk about these maybe in three different parts because like I said, the organization is very different, but Public Safety is very different in and of itself. You have people who are taking care of those in county custody. You have those who are providing patient care. And then finally, you have the courts that, and the affected entities that administer the justice there. So certainly offices were close to the public. They did staggered schedules, used increased PPE. There was a lot more cleaning and social distancing within facilities. I thought Regional Forensic Science Center had an interesting issue where law enforcement couldn't clear or wouldn't clear crime scenes when they arrived. And so that had some additional complexities for them, for their medical investigators. And then of course, emergency management coordinating a large part of the work had some significant challenges, especially because they have had some personnel shortages there. They do expect that as the courts reopen, things are going to get pretty busy. But the way business is done is going to have to change significantly. And the courts has actually some pretty interesting suggestions for uses of CARES funding to accommodate that. One thing I would tell you is the DA pointed out that there are 500 pending juvenile and criminal cases waiting to be filed. There are over 1,000 traffic cases that hopefully can start to be resolved through their creative setup out front for Traffic Court. But we know that the court is not intending to do large dockets again anytime soon. And so they are saying that they will need some additional pro temp judges to help with that backlog, or that backlog, once they get open. They're saying and advising, of course, that those pro temp judges will need space to do work. And so they have some suggestions for maybe some space changes here in this building, potentially using CARES funding to accommodate that. Of course, that's something we would have to submit through Wood O'Brien's for review on eligibility. But that was one of the most interesting things I certainly came across in reviewing these. In terms of employee management, I think probably even more so for them than for any other area of the organization, their risk exposure is greater because of the type of work they do. And so there's a lot of stress and anxiety about that. There are concerns about long-term employee absences and making sure that they have a staffing plan in place to accommodate that. And so they have done that. In terms of additional costs, they've incurred, of course, personal protective equipment. They are one of the largest drivers. We also know they've had a lot of overtime. They've had technology costs and lots and lots of cleaning services, particularly in detention facilities. So, and in terms of lost revenue, we know EMS transports went down. They reported about a 6% decrease in transport volume. I think what we've heard is generally there's a fear out in the community to use those services. M A B C D licenses and permits were down $400,000 through May and they expect that to be at $1 million through the end of the year. Now they do have some good fund balance, but certainly not a trend that we hope will continue or be sustained. The DA's office has indicated that diversion fees are down and we've also seen that court costs themselves have gone down, although as courts resume, of course, we expect to see a spike there. So in terms of legislative solutions, I think the concept that the District Court has is that in the short term, if we have pro temp judges, those would be costs that potentially the county would bear. But if that could then be translated into a legislative solution with magistrate judges, that would then be a cost that the state would pick up. And so those would be some legislative issues to address, although I realize that wouldn't happen until early next year. Any questions about Public Safety? Okay. Public Works. Generally, what this comes down to is a lot of their work was able to move online for their admin staff, but a lot of their field work continued. They were able to send their staff out and tried to limit one person per car. Now that there's mowers and things, they're worried that that can't continue. And so they'll be enforcing strict masking. And then we did have the e-waste event and some H H W remote collection events postponed, but they expect those to come back on when those communities feel safe to start those back up. And I'm sure Susan can tell you more about that during her Solid Waste Plan. There are potential concerns about revenue loss from defaults on solid waste fees. There are concerns, not necessarily on a legislative side for Congress or the state, but maybe in terms of our own internal processes to maybe make those a little more accommodating for what we're dealing with today in terms of signatures and things like that. So anything I can answer on Public Works? Okay. So we'll go on to Human Services. So this is another area where each of the entities that's in Human Services has a pretty different set of issues that they're dealing with. Calm Care, Health Department, the C D D O and Aging. I'm going to talk about Aging quickly. They did receive quite a bit of federal support and so they've been able to maintain programs, although they will need to get probably what they've said is a little more flexible in providing services going forward. And so they're working on that. Of course, you know that the Health Department has been at the forefront of all of this and so a lot of their day-to-day staff who did their normal day-to-day work have been reassigned to COVID efforts. And so you all have approved the additional positions to let those folks go back to their normal jobs. But certainly as the COVID pandemic continues, that will create challenges for them. And they've also had to change the way they provide service. C D D O's biggest concern is for the providers that are out there. We know that the group homes and things that they help to administer the programs that they do are based on a lot of a congregate setting. And unfortunately, that isn't safe under many of the COVID-19 restrictions and things that have been put out there. And so they've had to change the way they do business, creating or using more people to do that work, increasing overtime and creating challenges for them. And so C D D O's concern is that making sure that they can stay viable so that C D D O can continue to be maybe more the facilitator instead of the direct provider. And then finally, we'll talk about Calm Care. Calm Care has had a significant revenue loss, as we already talked about, because the types of appointments that they're having by phone are shorter. And so you can't bill as much obviously for that. Clients haven't necessarily felt safe coming in or haven't shown up for appointments. And so Calm Care staff have spent a lot of time trying to find those individuals and engage them. And that is not billable activity. So even though Calm Care staff are busy, they're not necessarily getting the same level of revenue for the same level of work. They have also, of course, endured the emotional stress that others have. And as we've heard, they've lost an employee and so that has created some, as you would expect, significant emotional issues for their staff. We also know that in the community, unemployment is up. As we've talked about, Sedgwick County has the highest unemployment rate in the state. And so they expect that with that will come additional mental stress, but also on the flip side, no insurance for those people to use to get service. And so that will exacerbate Calm Care's revenue problem and that they'll be expected to provide those services, maybe without a lot of revenue. And just like any human services department, most of those are funded with significant portions of state funding. And so as the state grapples with its budget issues, that will certainly be a concern that needs to be on the radar here, not just for our budget, but again, a potential opportunity for Commissioners to advocate. So Calm Care does expect that now that courts are back in session, they'll start to get more referrals. Hopefully that can help a little with that revenue situation. But certainly with all of the challenges that are in place now, there's no quick fix. They do have, they have purchased lots and lots of lawn chairs to send their social workers out into the field to have outdoor appointments. And so also that may help, but certainly also not a long-term fix. So some real challenges in that particular part of the organization. And so any questions I can answer on that or we can move to our final category? Okay. We will move right into Culture and Rec then. So this includes the parks, the zoo and Exploration Place in this particular survey. Excuse me. So as you know, zoo and Exploration Place closed to the public early in the year. They are reintroducing openings. I know Exploration Place opens in July. The zoo has already started to reopen with capacity limits and they expect to continue to have to do that until a solution is found for COVID-19. Though they are trying to use some alternatives like online education and trying to engage in a different way. They have had some furloughs, although the zoo did receive a Small Business Administration loan, which has helped their folks stay employed and working. And they expect to reexamine that when the loan ends. And then of course, we know, and we'll probably see it in the manager's recommended budget, but the zoo is reducing its capital projects going into the future. We know the county provides a share for that, so we'll expect to see some differences there. And of course, they have had significant lost revenue from not being able to be open from their, not just admissions, but gift shop sales, food sales, all of those kinds of things. So certainly you can see the impacts are varied and significant across the organization. We will try and use some of this information in crafting a strategic plan for you in terms of allocating portions of county funds. Certainly, we may not know exactly what that will look like and we will look for any policy direction from you all as we go through that. So I know this is a lot of information to be thrown at you. So let us know after you've had a chance to absorb what questions we can answer for you. And with that, I'm done and unable to stand for questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you Chairman. So as with all other departments, our Finance Department has day-to-day work to do as well. And I want to make sure that, you know, you guys have addressed the overwhelming workload that I know that you're being faced with right now with managing these funds, with working with consultants. Do you have everything that you need in the Finance Department? Do you have everything that you need in the finance department to do, to manage this stuff, to do your day-to-day? Why don't you talk to us about that a little bit, just so that we can make sure that you are okay in your department?
Well, it's very kind of you to ask. Thank you. I think right now, we're doing well. I think we, you all have been generous in allowing us to reach out to consultants and get help that we need, everything from the grant writer to Wood O'Briens. So I think for now, we are in good shape. You also have allowed us to have a temporary position. So we have a special project coordinator funded with CARES money, and that has been amazing. Depending on the outcome of how we go with maybe what the state's funding is and what directives they have for us on those CARES funding, we may need some additional resources to help manage that. But I will not be bashful in asking for that. So I think we're okay for now, and I'm sure when I get back to my desk, if I have angry jabbers or emails, I'll follow up and correct myself.
Well, I appreciate that. And I also am really impressed by just the seriousness of this situation, understanding the auditing process that could, that will happen later. You know, the training that's going to happen for those who do receive this funding and how it's spent. So I just want to applaud your efforts, your team's efforts. And this is a lot of work. I mean, this probably took a while to gather. I know that the forum that's ending on Friday, that's going to take a long time. So I know that you guys aren't just working 40 hours a week. I'm sure you're putting a lot of time in, and I want you to know how appreciated you guys are, because this is a lot.
Thank you. I will pass that along. They are an absolutely amazing team.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Lindsay, I've got a quick question. So this document, I would never have imagined what it was going to look like. Is this, was this in with assistance from Wood O'Brien?
This one was not.
Okay.
This was all homegrown.
All right. Kudos.
Thank you.
I repeat the thank you and appreciation that Commissioner Cruz mentioned.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Thank you for this presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
For that item, sir? Ready to move on?
Okay. We're ready to move on. We don't have any receiving files on any of these from Dr. Menz or from Lindsay, so this was just information.
Is it an agenda item? So, sir?
It was under new business. Mr. Papoun, so we don't have to receive and file those reports?
Yeah. Well, you can, you can receive and file, or, I mean, it doesn't matter, sir. It's entirely up to the board.
Well, I think officially, especially Dr. Menz's presentation and this one, I would propose, I'd motion that we officially receive and file. Motion is second. Receive and file. No comments. Madam Clerk, please. Call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Item C, adoption of the June 2020 Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Plan update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Susan Earle Wine, Director of Environmental Resources. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment requires every county to have a solid waste plan and to update it annually. And every five years, we do a more in-depth review, and that happened last year. Part of what KDHE wants us to do is update the citizenship numbers, the who's on the solid waste committee, current solid waste system, any changes to that, and importantly, update all of the data from the different components of the solid waste plan and any recommendations. To start with the data update, we had 16 businesses licensed in the county to collect solid waste, polite way of saying trash, from everybody's home curbside and some of the special cleanups that occur at homes. The amount of waste generated in 2019 was over 400,000 tons. This was a 1.4% increase from the 2018 numbers. And the state likes us to look at how many pounds we generate per person per day. And in Sedgwick County, that was 4.27, which is below the national average of 4.4 pounds. So we're doing all right compared to the national numbers. Looking at a five-year trend of how much trash is produced and thrown away, 2019, as I mentioned, was higher than the previous year, but you can see generally, we were lower than 2016 numbers, and it's been fluctuating a lot. I think part of that is due to the economic changes in our community. The amount recycled in 2019 was over 59,000 tons. That's a 5.4 decrease from 2018, and that has a lot to do with the markets and the markets changing. And whenever we talk to people who ask us, where can we take recyclables, we always tell them to be sure to call first to make sure that item's still received. And you can see from the five-year trend, even though we were down in 2019 from 2018, we're still above the 2015 and '16 numbers for recycling. So overall, it's an upward trend. Drop off recycling, there are two places people can still take material instead of using curbside. International Paper and Pro Kansas Mill Recycling Centers are open for the public to drop off material. And again, we always recommend they call first to make sure that item is still received. There are two main composting facilities here in Sedgwick County. Brooks Construction and Demolition Landfill and Evergreen Recycling. They received over 9,700 tons of material to compost at that facility. Some small cities have compost sites that are available only to their community. And we also had two companies start up last year that work with neighborhoods to provide five-gallon buckets at the curbside that the people could put food trash in. And then that food was collected and taken to a compost facility. Last year, they collected 34 tons of food scraps. Our county household hazardous waste facility had 23,850 participants last year and collected over 1,261 pounds of hazardous materials for free from Sedgwick County residents. This helps get the chemicals out of the household, and we will recycle it and dispose of it properly or put it in our swap-and-shop area where residents can come and pick up the material for free after we've checked it to make sure that it's in good shape and you can still read the label. Last year, we had over 387,000 pounds reclaimed from the swap-and-shop facility, and that was from over 9,000 customers. Because that's saving us money in disposal, it's a win-win situation. Customers aren't paying for it, and we aren't paying the disposal cost, which we had calculated at over $128,000 in 2019. So that money was saved. We also had five remote collection events in 2019 in Andel at Beechcraft Parking Lot, Derby, Hayesville, and Park City. As you know, we've had one this year so far in Garden Plain. Clearwater's coming up this Saturday. The Beechcraft postponed theirs, it would have been this past Saturday, but we're working for something in the fall, as along with the other two. So we're trying to still get them, but just moved them to the fall time period. The companies that generate a small amount of hazardous waste can bring that to our facility and use our contractors' price. We get paid for it, but it's much cheaper than if they called a collector to come to their business. We have worked with 403 businesses last year and collected over 69,000 pounds of materials from them. And you can see the trend here in household hazardous waste. The blue line is the volume of material over the last five years, and the red is the swap-and-shop material. So it's been kind of constant over time. With the future expansion of the facility, we hope to push more on Facebook, to get more customers, and other social media events to get more customers in. But right now, we're pretty much at limit until that expansion happens. Construction and demolition materials, there's two C and D landfills here in the county. They received over 167,000 tons of material. That's quite a bit, almost a 12% increase from 2018. And again, looking at a five-year chart, you can see 2018 and '17 were low for construction and demolition material. And this is two-by-fours, drywall, carpet, shingles, anything you'd associate with building a home or tearing one down. That material can go to these facilities. And I think, again, this is a reflection of economic changes in our community. Bulky waste, to help citizens get rid of items that are too large to put in their trash container. Since 2012, we have provided a coupon for residents to dispose of up to 1,000 pounds at the transfer station. They can take this material to the station, hand them the coupon, and my department gets billed instead of them. Since we started this, we've issued over 51,000 coupons. The bad part is, some of them aren't redeemed. Only 34% of those are redeemed. And I think people get anxious when they see that we're giving these out. Oh, I might have something to get rid of. And they order one and never use it. In fact, a week ago, we had a call from someone who just found theirs from last fall. And we told him, no, it's no good. It had a drop-dead date on it. We give about three months for people to use these coupons. But we will be offering this again next fall. So we're looking forward to that and hope people actually use it if they get it or just don't ask for it. We work with the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department on special cleanups where maybe a property's been reported to them as having excess material outside. You can see on the bottom-left photo on the slide is a before, and the bottom-right is after. What we do is provide dumpsters for them. A lot of time, the people want to clean up, but they can't afford it. So we will provide the dumpsters on-site, pay for the drop-off of the dumpster and the collection and the tonnage fee. And this has helped clean up 160 properties last year. And sometimes, it's not a dumpster's worth of material, and the people say, again, I can't afford it, but with a trailer and a pickup truck, I can do it. We give them a voucher so they can self-haul, and 182 individuals did that last year. So this is slowly helping to clean up our community. County pays for illegal dumping that happens along the township roads. Township provides the manpower to go out and pick up what's along the road or in the ditches, and we pay for the disposal cost of that. Since we started this in 2002, we've paid for over $2 million illegally dumped material to be disposed of. And $59,000 of that was last year. Another issue that has come up last year was mattresses and box springs. Instead of being part of a normal tonnage fee at a facility, the disposal facility started charging for the mattress and box springs separately, anywhere from $10 to $30 each. And so there was a concern that that would cause more illegal dumping out in the roads. And as you can see from that picture, mattress is pretty large, so it stands out when it's illegally dumped. We worked with the committee. They recommended we study the problem, see if there's an increase in disposal of mattresses. We worked with townships on their records, and we have a four-year average of what's the number-one item townships find along the roads, the tires. And the four-year average was 752 tires per year. Appliances, 200 tires per year, I mean, 200 appliances per year. Other, which could be boats, trailers, television sets, regular trash, 176 per year. Furniture, 109, and the mattresses, 105. After the increase in price, they really did not see a drastic increase in that average. So this is kind of the hierarchy of what people are throwing away. Talked to the committee about that a couple of weeks ago, and they recommended for now, we don't pursue anything specifically for mattresses. Continue to watch this. Storm debris, county added a tub grinder and air curtain burner in 2015 to help take care of the tree limbs and trees that are destroyed during tornadoes, floods, high-wind events, icing events. And we get a lot of calls from people after any of these events wondering if we're going to take the material. If it's a severe enough storm, we do, and they're transportable. In 2019, the tub grinder went down to Derby and helped clean up a lot of tree debris that they had. Also, the county has a storm debris contingency fund of $250,000 to use to help clean up storms at the commission's discretion. Christmas trees, every year, we have this program at 22 sites. They're normally parks, though I think there are 10 parks in Wichita that we set up and 12 in other communities. In 2019, we had over 3,600 trees received and chipped. People love the Christmas tree chips. At this time of year, we get a lot of calls on that where, you know, have you chipped the trees yet so we can come get the mulch? And people really want that. Since 2002, we've chipped over 96,000 Christmas trees for recycling. And electronics collection event. We had planned to have this in April, but due to the shutdowns due to the COVID-19, we postponed it, but there's our new dates, August 13th through 15th and 20th through 22nd. That's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, two weeks in a row, at the Sedgwick County Public Yard at 47th South and West Street. So it's 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. People can bring computers and related items, whether it's the monitor, keyboards, printers, any peripherals for computers, cell phones, television sets, games, any of that, even microwaves. And what we like about this event is our contractor's a zero-waste company. Everything's recycled. Nothing goes to a landfill, and they ship nothing overseas. It's all North America. So we're really pleased to work with that company. And we had, when we did this two years ago, over half a million pounds of material brought to the electronic waste event. Medical waste is another special waste the state asks us to look at. Stericycle picks up medical waste from hospitals, dentists, doctor's office, veterinarians, and ship it up to an incinerator in the northeast part of the state. But people also have medical waste in their homes. Medicines expire. They're not sure what to do with it. We work with the DEA on their collection programs. And some drug company, retail companies like Walgreens, have a drop-off at their facilities. And last year, we added five locations in the county at police stations where people can come in, drop off their over-the-counter prescription or controlled drugs. No questions asked. It's like a mailbox. You open the drawer, put it in, and when it's full, the police station calls our department. We go out, box it up, put a new box inside the container, and they're ready to go. So this has been very well-received. Right now, they're in Bel Air, Cheney, Clearwater, Mulvane, and Valley Center, and we plan on working with more police stations to add those. And the reason they're at a police station is because of the controlled drugs. We need that facility. We do public education. We have handouts we prepare. We go out to shows, schools, civic groups, talk about recycling and waste generation and the special ways and how to take care of them. And online, we have a recycling guide where you go to the sedgwickcounty.org website under Environmental Resources, click on the item that you want to get rid of, and a list appears of who takes those items locally. So we're trying to help the community cut back on their waste. The state requires that any state permits or grants first have to come before the county to make sure they're in compliance with our solid waste plan. In 2019, we had no permits or grants come before us. And the solid waste fee is voted on by the end of June every year by the county commissioners. Last year, the base rate for residential property was set at $7.80 for the entire year. Non-residential, $5.03 through up to $10.07 for the entire year for businesses. So that money pays for all of these programs I've been talking about, whether it's cleaning up after storms. We have waste tire events, electronic waste events, the pharmaceutical waste, special cleanups, bulky waste. And we're trying to think of more programs that we can offer the community in the future. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Susan. I'm glad you're here. It's your presentation annually. I just, I think Commissioner Cruz and I saw it for the first time last year. It's, it's good information to know. It's very eye-opening for me.
Yeah.
So thank you again for the, for the presentation. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Susan, thank you for everything you do.
I need to turn on my mic. Learn my lesson on those hot lines.
Learned my lesson on those hot lines. But I thank you for everything that you do, always being so supportive of, you know, my constituent concerns. And I'm delighted to see the e-waste event is still going to happen in 2020, because I had so many people reach out disappointed what, you know, had happened this spring that we had to cancel it. So thank you for pushing that forward and coming up with a date that's actually coming up pretty rapidly.
Yes, it is. And we, I've received emails or phone calls pretty much daily on when are you going to have this event? So we're pleased, and we'll be advertising it on the radio, newspapers, Facebook, websites. So we'll get the message out there.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Susan, I absolutely appreciate the ability to clean out all the extra paint, all of my aerosol cans. I just took a bunch of stuff down there. And so I just want to reiterate, you know, with all the projects that I'm sure people have completed over this time of being home or cleaning out of their house, to utilize our facility to properly dispose of all of those cans of paint that, you know, you've sat in your garage or your basement for years. Additionally, I just want to say thank you to your incredible staff down there. They're always friendly and pleasant and knowledgeable. I think that you have a good team down there, so I appreciate what you do. And this presentation was really informative and, as always, pretty great. So thank you, Susan, for what you do.
Well, thank you, and I do have a great staff, and we work well together. Thanks.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate, just as Commissioner Cruz, what happens down there. We had a solid waste disposal out in Garden Plain here a little over a week ago, and I was out there for two and a half hours or so. During that period, they had about 200 cars, but I never heard the final, do you know how many vehicles we had and how much of the solid waste that you got out at Garden Plain?
And just in case you asked, I brought information on that. The actual car count was 182 vehicles, and the total pounds was 38,048 pounds, so quite a bit. And that's a pretty significant number for Garden Plain. And we put it in the newspapers in the area, Cheney, you know, Time Sentinel and The Eagle. We try to get that information out, so. And I appreciate you being there. The guys really enjoyed your company.
Well, I want to thank also all of the city council folks at Garden Plain, because they participated in helping during that event. Also, at the same time, Cheney was having a cleanup, so I think a lot of different products came over from Cheney. So it was a great event, and I appreciate you putting it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to, you went, the slideshow was great, but can you please tell me again how much was given, how much was received on the electronic waste event last time?
Yeah, if you want an exact number.
Well, I think I heard what you said, but I wasn't sure, so.
Last time, we had 536,553 pounds. So that's 536553 from 3,874 vehicles.
And give me, how much did that event cost Cedric County?
294,809.
Okay. And I'm just curious on the issue of the mattresses. Again, I appreciate the feedback on that. I haven't heard that yet, so appreciate that information today. When they did consider that, did they consider the idea that potentially we can do our tire roundup differently? Is that part of their consideration that the equipment we would purchase to do mattresses would potentially take care of other items like furniture and tires?
No, they were looking specifically at mattresses on their decision. If we were to go into a shredder that would take tires and mattresses and furniture or other items, I know one company sells a large shredder for $770,000. The maintenance on that's $42,000 a year. So what we would need, you don't leave a $800,000 piece of equipment outside, so we'd have to have a building, forklifts, staff. I think we'd have to make an overall plan, if you want to look to the future on a facility to do something like that.
Again, I think it's a vision. It'd be something that we'd have to plan out carefully. But this is a, you know, just much like our tire roundup or much like some of the other events we have, if we were able to receive this stuff year-round and was paid for with the solid waste fee, and again, I'll continue to say, I think we should take donations or accept payment for those that are willing to pay or want to pay for their service in addition to the solid waste fee. I think that's a way to offset some of that. But it just requires a bit of a vision. I think there's going to be a return on investment, if you will. Might be years in the future, but at the end of the day, if we're doing this tire roundup every couple of years, we're doing, I guess my point would be, I think that people would really appreciate that service. And one of the things we, one of the things we're not doing that I think that some smaller cities are doing is the tree limb composting. And I think for Cedric County, it would be very, very popular if we were able to offer that through this fee. So it just requires a bit of a vision and planning, planning the project out. I think it has merit, but not on mattresses by itself. I think mattresses by itself doesn't work. Like a collection event, I don't think that works. But I do think that if we were to include other things and do it year-round, I think it becomes a little more, a little more likely that we could, we could make a program like that work. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Susan, in closing, have you got some more to do?
No.
Okay. I noticed you had, there's a board, and I think the appointment that I had is vacant this week. So can I get with you, and you can help me decide who I should put on that board?
Sure. For the Solid Waste Management Committee?
Right. I think that's it. That was, I just was notified this week, so thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell has a question.
No, Mr. Chairman. I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the annual update for submission to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Thanks again, Susan.
Item D, adoption of a resolution establishing solid waste fees for 2021.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Carly Sanchez, Principal Management Analyst with the Budget Office. Since 2000, Cedric County has imposed solid waste fees, which provide partial funding for the program Susan Earlewine just described for you. State law provides that if the county chooses to impose a solid waste fee, it must do so before July 1st for the fee to be effective for the following calendar year. The action before you today is to impose a solid waste fee for 2021. The fee varies according to classifications. Residential property owners pay a fixed amount per dwelling unit, and commercial and industrial property owners pay an amount based on their waste generation characteristics for their particular business or parcels of property. The resolution proposed for 2021 suggested a range of fees that are flat with 2020 fees. The residential fee is $7.80. Tier one is $5.03. Tier two is $6.71. Tier three is $8.39. Tier four is $10.02. And tier five, which are large multi-use properties such as the malls, is $6.71 times the number of business units within that parcel of property. Those fees will be collected through the county's property tax bills. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. If not, then I recommend that you adopt the resolution that is before you.
Okay. Are there any questions to Carly? Carly, thanks for the information. I know we've all been briefed on this as well.
You're welcome.
And so probably no changes since the briefings. Okay. I don't see any questions. Entertained a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve as presented. I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on June 11th, 2020.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director.
Hi, Joe.
The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on June 11th has produced four items for your consideration and approval. This item, the first one, is Change Order Number Two, which is an amendment to the Disability Cocoon Contract. This is for Cedric County's Developmental Disability Organization. The recommendation is to accept the change order to extend this contract with Disability Cocoon LLC, and that's through December 31st, 2020. Item number two is Change Order Number One, Amendment to the Conica Minolta Business Solutions LLC, or, excuse me, USA Incorporated Contract for various county departments. And this recommendation is to accept the change order, and that's to extend the contract with Conica Minolta Business Solutions through October 19th, 2021. Item number three is Software Products and Related Services for various departments. And this recommendation is to utilize the Texas Department of Information Resources Contract DIRTSO 4368 with Executive Information Systems LLC. This contract will be good through April 4th, 2021, and would have the ability to have two, two-year options to renew. Our final item is the Cedric County Backup Solution, and this is for the Division of Information and Technology. And this recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Eagle Software Incorporated that's doing business as Eagle Technologies. And this is for an estimated five-year cost of $328,685.63. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions? I don't see any, Joe. Thank you.
Motion to approve Boards of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve as presented. Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Tom.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommending consent items G through M.
Okay. Okay. Consent items G through...
M.
M?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dennis. Yeah. Mr. Dennis has a question. Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve item golf through Mike with the exception of Juliet.
Okay. I'll second that. There been a motion to approve all the items with the exception of J. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I have a question. Okay. So when will we, thank you, Chairman, when will we be discussing item J?
Next.
Oh, right after this. Okay, sorry. Excuse me.
Okay. Thanks for clarification. So again, no other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, let's go to item J.
Item J, 2020 Annual Operation and Maintenance Assurance Statement Land and Water Conservation Fund.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. This is an item that comes to our board every year. It's a request to sign the fact that we receive financial assistance from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. My concern is that a lot of years ago, we received some funding for some comfort stations out at Lake Afton, and a result of that, we got all of Lake Afton encumbered. Also, we received some funding a lot of years ago for the area where the Extension Center is now. That was then moved to the Coliseum Park Development. And then it was, we started out about 20 acres. It moved up to 93.4 acres of the Coliseum. And then when they decided to sell the Coliseum camper area, it moved out to the Northeast Park, and now 646 acres are encumbered. So we brought this up several times. What I request is that we go back to our lobbyists in DC and that we ask our representatives and senators to see if we can get some relief from this, because for a very, very small amount of money that we received at one point in time, we have huge parcels that are worth millions of dollars to our community that we can do nothing with. And so I would like to make a motion to, first of all, approve item Juliet, but with the caveat that we go back to our lobbyists and our legislators and ask them, please help us with some relief on this. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. You make a good point. Thank you for the history, and I think it's a worthy cause. Let's hope we can make some progress on that.
For sure.
Been a motion and a second? Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. And next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Mike Papu.
Mr. Chairman, I really don't have anything to report on the legislature at this point. Signing die is over, and there hasn't really been any new legislative news that I have so.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Oh, no.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Under other, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to just discuss really briefly all of the events that are happening this week for Juneteenth. I will, I'll post in the feed, and also I'd like to get something posted online. Oh, my mic, sorry, my mic is not on. So I would like to, I would like to remind everybody what's happening this week as far as Juneteenth goes. There are a lot of events going on. I would like to have those, a link posted in the Facebook feed, the YouTube feed, and one possibly on the culture and recreation site on our Cedric County website, so that people who want to join will have an easy place to find all of those activities.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, I was invited to go out to our law enforcement training center at 6 o'clock last night with a number of other community leaders for a use-of-force briefing by the Wichita Police Department. And first of all, I want to thank them very much for putting that on, because it was very enlightening. I posted it on Facebook last night that I attended that, but didn't provide too many details at that point in time. And I got a request back, and we want to know what you're learning out there. Luckily, I had taken some pictures of the slides that they were using to brief from at that point in time. And so if you'll bear with me, it's on my cell phone, so I'm going to go through a little bit about what we learned last night. But really, the goal of anything dealing with our police or our sheriff's department is fair and impartial policing. And what they did is they defined what fair and impartial policing is. It's fundamental to the legitimacy of law enforcement officers in society and their specific jurisdictions. They also implemented how to employ, implement controlled and unbiased response in law enforcement duties. What they have is an integrated training system, and they have hundreds of hours just on this one subject while the officers are going through the law enforcement training center. And what they talk about is that it's a training system that combines tact, which is the mastery of interpersonal communications, tactics, which is the mastery of decision-making in dynamic situations involving potential risk to life, limb, and property, and trust, acting with consistent attention to integrity, benevolence, competence, and predictability. When they went through the hundreds of hours, the things that they train our officers are pressure-point control tactics, interpersonal communications and scenarios, mental health training and scenarios, DV scenarios, handcuffing and searching, close-quarter combat, ground fighting, if it ever gets to that point, taser, baton, and pepper spray, weapon retention, how do the officers make sure they don't lose control of that, how to defend in a knife attack, in firearms attack, and scenario-based training utilizing defensive tactics and methods. So these are some of the types of things that they train. But the important thing is that as they're training those, they train two different things. One is the level of resistance from anyone that they're dealing with, and one area is the level of control. And depending on the scenario, you can enter into any of these different areas, but the level of resistance can start from psychological intimidation, verbal... level of resistance can start from psychological intimidation, verbal noncompliance, passive resistance, defensive resistance, then up to active resistance, and then up to aggravated active aggression. And the police officers or the sheriff's deputy, then, they use for control, obviously, officer's presence is really 99% of the time, that's all it takes, or verbal direction. They can also up it to some soft, empty-handed techniques, hard, empty-handed techniques, and then to intermediate weapons, which I talked about with the baton and so forth, and pepper spray. But then it can escalate all the way to lethal force. They've also gone down to New Orleans and took a look at some of the programs that they have down in New Orleans, and they have a program called EPIC. It's a peer intervention program designed by the New Orleans Police Department and special partners to encourage active participation in the conduct and well-being of coworkers, based heavily on the history, science, and active bystandership in support of the years of research. And what that is, is that you do not want a police officer, if they start doing something wrong, and another police officer is there for that other police officer not to intervene. So, this is the way that they teach the other officers, that they do need to intervene. We saw a bad case of that recently that caused a lot of the problems in our communities. But there's already a program here that's being trained that says you do need to intervene if you see something happening. So, what to do? It authorizes and empowers the police officers to intervene in another officer's actions, regardless of their rank, even if it's a higher-ranking officer, you can intervene. It teaches them how to intervene successfully, and it protects those officers when they do intervene. And it teaches everyone more effective ways of doing what every... All the police officers and sheriff's deputies already do already, and that's protect both the officers and the community. Let me go to my next one. They ended this up... And each of us have a lot of police officers, sheriff's deputies, that are our friends. A lot of us... My father was a police officer when I was born, and we truly respect exactly what they do each and every day. But they ended her up with a quote from President Calvin Coolidge, and he said, "No one is compelled to choose a professional police officer, but having chosen it, everyone is obligated to perform its duties and live up to the highest standards of its requirements." So, that's exactly what our police officers and our sheriff's deputies are trying to do each and every day. And again, I appreciate being able to attend that event last night, and since I was... I don't know if the other Commissioners were invited or not, but I wanted to make sure that I passed on exactly what I heard last night. And thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. We don't see any other lights for other, so I move that we close the meeting of the Board of Commissions and go to the... Open the meeting for the Fire District. Does that need a second?
Mr. Chairman, we have an executive session, apparently.
Yes, after the Fire District. Okay. Right. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun. Essentially, your journey in the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and then opening, convening the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners sitting as the Fire District, number one.
Correct. That's my motion.
That's your motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
I guess.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay. We're... We'll take... Now, what? Do we have to take the roll for the meeting of the Fire District? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Okay. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Public Agenda.
Anybody for the public like to address the Fire District? And being done, we will close the public agenda or public input. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item A, Capital Improvement Program Amendment, Fire Station 31, Project Budget.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Okay. Valerie Castor, Project Services Manager, here to speak with you today about the budget for the CIP Amendment for the construction of Fire Station 31 in Andale, Kansas. The CIP Amendment for the replacement, just to give you a little history. The CIP Amendment for the replacement of Fire Station 31 was approved by the CIP Committee on January 31st, 2019, and the Board of County Commissioners approved the fund transfer from the Fire District Fund, General Fund, into the Fire Equipment Reserve on February 6th, 2019. Budgeting estimates and planning were built upon the assigned $1.75 million funding. Land and construction were assessed at $1,620,550, design at $87,109, and the owner's items, which consists of the furniture fixtures and equipment, at $38,618. And that's just shy of $1.75 million. What we've actually spent to date, the price of land came in at $108,900 and design at On April 28th, we received five bids for construction of this project. The lowest bid was for $2,105,700. The variation between the bids from the lowest to the highest was only $157,867. Which brings us to why I'm here today. We need additional funding to complete this project. The lowest bid is $735,700 higher than what is currently budgeted for construction. We've been able to value-engineer additional components out of the building, which would provide cost savings but not significantly impact operations of the fire station. Which brings us to the project's current need of additional funding of $660,558. And this will cover the construction needs, FFNE, and the contingency funding, which we've also slashed by half for what we would normally do for a project. So, I'm sure you're asking, as we did, how did this happen? After researching the reason for the shortfall, we found three main areas as contributing. The process being number one. This project budget was developed from construction cost information of a previously-built Cedric County Fire Station without utilizing project services. So, an annual construction inflation of 3% was not applied to the numbers. However, we were hopeful and worked very hard to meet the budget provided by removing and economizing a number of materials, finishes, hardware, and styles that had been previously been considered standard station components. Unfortunately, we were still unable to bridge that gap. The second is COVID-19. There has been some mixed information regarding the effects of COVID-19 on construction. Subsequent to bid opening, reports were received from some contractors who have seen price increases across the board due to the pandemic. This is in relation to factories' abilities to receive materials, reducing their production days. Most office staff is working remotely, which has affected some communication, and there's been concern over the transportation of product. And finally, vendor estimates. In the planning stages, the architect calculated and received numbers from vendors, which proved to show significant differentiation in the actual bids received. For example, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing were 59% higher in the actual bids than the estimates. Concrete increased by 74%. Masonry increased by 26%. Steel increased by 439%. As it was found, the vendors did not include erection costs in their estimate information. And there were some other, more minor materials that were affected. It is my recommendation that the County Commissioners approve this CIP Amendment, and I'm... Can't answer any questions. There's also a bunch of people that can help answer questions I can't, so.
Right. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. We've been working on this project for several years, actually, and unfortunately, in that period of time, why some costs have gone up, some of the estimates that were taken several years ago weren't very accurate. But let me just talk about that building and why that we need something updated out there. That building that's in existence currently was built in 1998 as a temporary building while they were looking for a better location. There are no women's quarters in that building. It's got one very small bathroom and a small locker room, and it has to be shared by both men and women. The sleeping quarters have no division or privacy. There's no vehicle exhaust system in the building to pull out the cancer and carcinogenic issues that happen when that big vehicle is started. There's no storm shelter to protect our 24-hour crews. I've been out there a number of times. If you take a look at that fire engine that we've got out there, it is so tight that as they back up, there is inches, and I'm not exaggerating, inches of room left behind the vehicle, and only inches of room in front of the vehicle once that you close that door. If the firefighters need access to their equipment that's on the other side of the building, they actually have to open the large overhead door in order to be able to go out and around and to get to their equipment. That tight fit of that engine creates a very dangerous environment every time they try and back it in, because there's just no room for error whatsoever. They've actually got a block of wood hooked to the floor for the left rear wheel to go against, because that's how close that they have to be, so that they don't run into the back end of the building. We have a brush truck out there also, but that brush truck is parked outside in the weather, because there's no space in that building that that engine takes every bit of the space. Also, it is located in the middle of our Public Works yard. So, as equipment keeps coming in and out for the Public Works yard in that gravelled area, it creates additional cleaning, potential problems with our breathing apparatus that we've got out there, from the dust, medical, and electronics equipment is compromised. The responses are actually delayed in the evening, because they lock that building or the yard up. There are gates on there, and if you ever take a look at it, besides, there's a very large ditch that's fairly narrow driveway going in and out of that, and we've got to get that fire truck in and out of there in a hurry. So, and at night, when the Public Works isn't there, our firefighters have to stop at that gate, unlock the gate, pull the truck through, lock the gate, and then go to the fire. So, it delays response time. At times, we have to park a tender out there. Just last year, Andale had a problem with their water tower, and so we had to put extra tenders out there, and as a result of that, we had to park that tender outdoors. Also, in the future, we've got to always take a look at what's going to happen in our county. This fire station that we're looking at is designed to last us 50, 75 years. And as we look forward to what's going to happen in 50 or 75 years, one of the things that may happen very soon, I can't tell you what's going on, but Mount Hope has its own EMS. They had some problems here not too long ago, and we were picking up EMS for it. They've subsequently been able to resurrect that, but I don't know for how long that the small community like that can afford to continue to operate an EMS system. So, we need enough room that we can put our large fire truck in there, that we can put our brush truck inside of there, that we can bring tenders in as they're needed in that area, and also to make sure that we can have a place for EMS if we need to start providing EMS services in that area. So, these are the reasons that we need that facility. I wish that we didn't have to come back and say that we need some additional funding in order to make this happen, but as that processed through, we're now to the point where that we need to amend. And so, I would like to make a motion that we approve the request for providing additional funding in the amount of $660,558 from the Fire District General Fund to facilitate the construction of the new Fire Station Number 31. Thank you.
Okay. I'll second that. I know we've all been briefed as well a little bit on the history of this and how that number originated and why it is today. So, thank you for the background that I received. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. Back in 1998, when that building began to be utilized for... As a fire station, that wasn't a new building at that time, was it?
Um, I can't...
There was a new building?
[inaudible].
It's hard to believe we constructed a building for a fire station that is that inadequate, but okay.
Hello, Commissioners. Doug Williams, Fire Chief. Yes, that building was constructed in 1998, new.
And it was constructed as a fire station?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's very surprising. I think that Commissioner Dennis raised a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and I'm very supportive of replacing the building. I had no idea that that was... I thought it had a history before that, so I guess that's news to me. What do you plan to do? What's the plan with this building in the future? Is it owned by the Fire District right now, or is it owned by Cedric County? What's going to happen to the building in the future?
I'd have to talk... You know, that's... Those decisions will be above me, but we built that building, we paid for the building, but it was built on Public Works land, so that would be a conversation that could be had.
I mean, we have to keep our finances separate between Cedric County and the Fire District, so I'm just curious if it's owned by the Fire District and it's going to be utilized by Cedric County, should there be a transfer of value between the Fire District and the county? How are we going to... How are we planning on handling that? I guess.
Commissioners, Lindsay Poe Rousseau, CFO. So, for purposes of property insurance, the Fire District is also self-insured, and so we are able to submit one single asset listing to our insurance company, and they allow us to do that. So, in terms of assets, it may legally... The dollars may come from the Fire District, but because the Fire District is a part of Cedric County for our insurance purposes, we're able to basically claim it on our asset listing.
I guess... I mean, let me restate my question. When this was constructed, it was constructed with Fire District dollars. It's an asset that's owned by the Fire District. We can't just assume the value into the county. There should be... Either we're going to... I guess I'd like to know how we plan on handling that, that it's an asset within the Fire District.
So, the way it's reported in our comprehensive annual financial report is we have kind of an entity-wide statement, but then we're able to go into the specific individual funds and list those inventories and assets by fund type, and so it would be listed there in the Fire District column.
But we don't plan to use the building in the Fire District in the future, and it's inside of a county yard, so I would assume either it has value as a county yard facility or maybe it doesn't. I don't know, but...
So, when that transition occurs, then we would basically work with either our auditors or insurance folks to tell us exactly how to classify that. But I don't think we're to that stage yet, and so we haven't gone through that process yet.
If it's useful to the county...
Yes.
Then perhaps the Fire District should sell it to the county for some dollar figure, which will allow us essentially to put money from the county into the Fire District for the value of that building. Is that reasonable?
On its surface, yes. I would definitely want to check with legal to make sure I'm not fibbing.
We haven't got to this yet, but I know that there's three items today, and I know the third item is related to the transfer, but to me, it's all related, so I guess I need to bring it up now.
Okay.
I am concerned about taking money out of the equipment fund to fill this need. There's a couple of things I learned in trying to study this issue, and that is that we're purchasing... I should say, we're purchasing through lease... Through lease contracts, the very expensive equipment within the Fire District. Our fire trucks, half a million dollars, would have a... Over eight years of payments, lease payments. Eventually, we'd own that vehicle, but we would also pay $200,000, and I would call that interest fees or whatever, financing fees to do that. So, what would be a half-million-dollar fire truck would actually cost the county... Excuse me, the Fire District, $700,000. So, I'm very concerned about that. I think we need to understand that. I don't think that's a good way to purchase our equipment, but taking this $600,000 out of the equipment fund to purchase this building is very concerning. I'm going to support the motion today, but I think that... I want people in the Fire District to know I'm very supportive of getting a new fire station. We need that. I do think this is larger than it needs to be, and it maybe is a little bit more substantial than it needs to be in terms of its brick-and-mortar style of construction. I think we could probably cut some costs out of this and still have a beautiful and functional fire station. Having said that, I understand that the proposal is to do... Having said that, I understand that the proposal is to do what's in front of us today. I want to be supportive of that, but I think we need to be more, I guess we need to find ways to do kind of similar to what we did on EMS station out there on Webb Road. We saved millions of dollars by changing the type of construction. And again, if Andale had a larger need for a four-bay station, we could have always added a couple of bays and had that planned into this project, but, so again, I'll be supportive of the motion, but I'm a little bit concerned about the transfer of funds and, in my opinion, a higher cost for this station than what was probably really needed in Andale. So that's all I'm going to say for now. Thank you.
Okay. No other comments. There's been a motion and a second to approve. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on June 11, 2020.
Good afternoon again.
Aye.
Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. And this item was presented to the Board of Bids and Contracts on June 11 as well, and it's one item for the fire attack and supply holes for Fire District number one. Recommendation is accept the low bids, meeting specifications. And so for item one, that will be from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated. For items two and three, Casco Industries Incorporated. And item four from Wies Fire and Safety Equipment LLC. And so we would establish contract pricing for two years and then have three one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions? Being done, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions being done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye. Aye, that's correct.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present, I mean, aye.
Thank you again, Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent, item C.
Okay.
Move to approve, Charlie.
I'll second that. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item. There is none. We will adjourn the Fire District and will reconvene, reopen the, Commissioner Howell?
Yes, I was not concerned earlier during the previous meeting. That's why I was concerned about then to go back to the VOCC for more business.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Howell, using the word adjourn, we could just convene the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners at this point and have another roll call.
Okay.
Because we use that terminology.
We will now reconvene the.
Convene.
We will convene the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Commissioner Cruz.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 10 minutes until 12:46 for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel relating to employment of a management-level county employee, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to a live broadcast after the executive session at 12:46.
Okay.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
We will go to executive session. We will stay in this room, so if everybody could please exit and confirm the media is off.